Before we move on, we will be going into, our board will be going into closed session. We will be coming out. We will be trying to come back certainly by 7:00. But I just wanted everybody to know, we didn't just come and leave, but we do have a few personnel matters that we have to do in closed session first. So I will have whoever is ready to-
Madam Chair.
Yep.
My motion pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene in closed meeting to discuss or consider personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption as Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 has amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. We are back in session. Mr. Hirons, can you read us out a closed session?
Yes. Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 has amended, requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you pull the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Connolly?
Aye.
Ms. Kader?
Agreed.
Ms. Egan?
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard?
Agreed.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Mr. Hirons?
Agreed.
Mr. McCosker?
Agree.
Madam Chair, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Mr. McCosker has joined us for closed session. So, thank you very much. So, I will start off. We have some motions out of closed session. I believe Ms. Healy, are you-
Yes, Madam Chairman. I move that we accept this superintendent's recommendation for the executive level position.
For-
Or, I'm not sure the title, the HR.
HR.
All right. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second.
Hey, listen, don't second over me.
Third.
All right. Well, it's been moved, seconded, and third. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, would you like to make our announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce that Ms. Lisa Boatwright is the school board's appointment this evening as Executive Director for Human Resources. Ms. Boatwright, who was previously the Director of Employee Relations and Workplace Compliance, has served as interim Executive Director of Human Resources since October of 2016. Her accomplishments include the development of a competency-based interview selection process for administrative positions, initiating drafting model contracts for use with various agencies in the areas of student teaching, internships, nursing, and related services, and ongoing legal contract review for the division. She has drafted and revised comprehensive leave policies and regulations, including the new VRS Hybrid Policy and Regulation. She has overseen the development of new recruitment initiatives, market-based compensation models, and organizational initiatives to foster employee engagement and mobilize talent. In addition, Ms. Boatwright was a presenter at the Virginia Society for Human Resources Management's Annual Conference, and is an adjunct professor at the University of Maryland, the University College, in the area of employment law, labor law, and relations in HR management. Ms. Boatwright received her bachelor's degree and Juris Doctorate from the University of Virginia. She is a member of the Virginia State Bar, Society for Human Resource Management, and various other professional and community organizations. Congratulations, Ms. Boatwright.
I guess sort of- Sort of welcome aboard, or we are happy to have you in the position. Thank you, Ms. Boatwright. We also have another motion. Mr. Hirons?
Madam Chair, I do have a motion that I don't want everyone to get too excited about. It is going to be a motion to accept Dr. Benson's resignation, but following on offering him a extended contract. And it's going to be done through this resolution. Resolution to reappoint Dr. Bruce Benson as Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools, whereas Dr. Bruce Benson was appointed Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools for a term commencing July 1, 2015, and extending July 30, 2019, and whereas Dr. Benson has submitted his resignation effective June 30, 2017, and whereas the school board wishes to accept Dr. Benson's resignation and to reappoint him as Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools for a term commencing July 1, 2017, and ending July 30, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County, that the school board accepts Dr. Benson's resignation effective June 30, 2017, and be it further resolved that Dr. Benson is appointed Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools for a term commencing July 1, 2017, and ending July 30, 2021. And be it further resolved that the chairman and clerk of the board are authorized to execute an employment agreement with Dr. Benson, a copy of which is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks for letting her have it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Dr. Benson, I am going to take chairman's privilege on this one. So, I am thrilled that Dr. Benson has wanted to stay with us, and also that we want him to stay here. He has talked about the great work that has begun in this division, but also what more needs to be done. We want to make sure that Dr. Benson stays at the helm with us for as long as possible. The longest contract under Virginia law, for what we have here, is for four years. So, even though it sounds scary, that's why we tried to preface it. This was done actually several years ago as well, and I remember sitting here going, "Oh, my gosh, what are we doing?" But we have to accept the termination and resignation from the current contract so that we may issue a follow-on contract. So, I know that this board is very much behind the work that Dr. Benson has begun. We know we've dealt with a lot of operational issues initially, and I know we are moving into the instructional area, as evidenced by, and I know many of us will chat about it, the Teaching and Learning Summit, and many other areas. But I am very excited and pleased that you will remain here as our superintendent until after even my daughter graduates, but also for all the students that are going to be graduating in the coming years. So, thank you for staying here. I'll give you the floor for a comment if you want.
Well, I'll get choked up.
I know.
Just say thank you. It's a pleasure to serve this board and our community. So I'm looking forward to the next four years. We've got a great team of folks to work with here, and we're doing some pretty incredible work. So I'm excited and really pleased to be able to stay another four years with you all. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hirons, can you lead us?
(APPLAUSE). To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to our approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to the President.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or modifications? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to one of our favorite parts of the evening is our award time. I'd like to recognize Mr. Robert Bingham, Principal of HH Pool Middle School, for a presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Benson. I am proud to bring you some very impressive young ladies from HH Pool Middle School. During April and May of this school year, students worked with Ms. Audrey DiFiore, Ms. Janie, Ms. Edmund, Ms. Huff Stickler, Ms. Egan, and Ms. Jones, my science department, on the Cubes in Space project. The Cubes in Space project is an eye-doodle incorporated program in partnership with NASA Langley Research Center, Wallops Flight Facility, and the Colorado Space Grant Consortium. This project offers global design competitions for students 11 to 18 years of age to develop steam-based experiments for launch into space. Since 2014, Cubes in Space has flown nearly 400 experiments representing 1,500 educators and over 20,000 students from 57 different countries. This year, Ms. DiFiore and her students competed against nearly 600 educators and thousands of students from 39 different countries. HH Pool students proposed experiments for space on NASA's sounding rocket, which launched last Thursday, from NASA's Wallops Flight Facility on Eastern Shore in Virginia, or on a high-altitude balloon late this summer from NASA's Columbia Scientific Balloon Facility in Fort Sumner, New Mexico. The following student projects were selected to go into space on the sounding rocket and high-altitude balloon, or both. Students, please come forward as I call your name. Ms. Gabriella Cannon developed a project called Dehydrated Daphnia Dilemma, which exposes protozoa to high levels of UV radiation. Her project is flying on the high-altitude balloon this summer. Nina Boligids, Alexis Haskin, and Jennifer Snyder created a project called Pills in Space. This project looks at the effectiveness of medication in space. Their project flew on the rocket and will fly on the balloon as well. Caroline Fortes, Emma Inglesby, and Faith Turner developed a project called Sticky Situation, which tests the effectiveness of adhesives in space. This project flew on the rocket last week. Rebecca Pratt and Hannah Solis developed a project called An Arts Inquiry, which looks at clay's suitability for building structures in space. Their project went up on the rocket last week. We are very proud of these students. Their projects beat out thousands of students from across the country and internationally. And we are very proud of them. Please give them a hand. Mr. Bingham. Was the competition girls-only?
No.
Wow. Ladies.
Woo-hoo! Girl power!
Great job. Amazing to see.
That's right.
They say girls don't like science.
I know. Girls love science.
Great job.
That's right. Moving on to our recognitions, we have, as we, in June, we always have this time of year where we do focus, we have some of our retirements that come forward. So when we have our meeting in July, we will have maybe two more people, probably not, watching us at home on their TV. I wouldn't either. But there will not be two people sitting in these seats who have sat here for many of the meetings that I have sat through, and I truly appreciate their devotion. But I'm going to have Ms. Egan, Sue, if you would come forward. And I'm going to let Ms. Egan talk about me.
A proclamation to recognize Dr. Susan Clark upon her retirement as Executive Director of Student Services for Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas Dr. Susan Clark completed 34 years of professional experience in the field of special education, and whereas she was a special education teacher, behavior consultant, and diagnostician prior to joining Stafford County Public Schools in 1990, and whereas Dr. Clark served as the supervisor of Secondary Special Programs, Special Education Director, and Executive Director of Student Services from 1990 to 2017, and whereas Dr. Clark researched, staffed, and implemented the first American Sign Language courses for high school students, and whereas she facilitated and implemented community-based instruction for the practical and generalization of fundamental skills for students with significant disabilities, and whereas she supported the implementation of the first state alternative assessment program for students with disabilities, and whereas Dr. Clark expanded the quality of health services through the implementation of a comprehensive medical management system and concentration of qualified nursing staff, and whereas she provided a full continuum of services for children inclusive of co-teaching, community-based, related services, and intensive support program models, and whereas she provided continual professional development to Stafford County Public Schools administrative and instructional staff, and as adjunct faculty preparing teachers at the University of Mary Washington, and whereas she partnered with the community to institute transition services and other post-secondary opportunities for students with disabilities, including Mary Washington Healthcare, and the launching of Project Search, a business-led student internship model. And whereas Dr. Clark partnered with Stafford County Government to implement two public-day school programs resulting in positive, intensive support to students, and greater fiscal management, and whereas she represented Region III Special Education Directors on the Virginia Department of Education State Council, and whereas she was the recipient of the 2017 James D. McLemm Award for Outstanding Leadership presented by the Virginia Council of Administrators in Special Education. Now therefore be it proclaimed, our esteemed appreciation for Dr. Susan Clark's years of service to Stafford County Public Schools. Thank you, Sue Clark.
Okay, we do have a second proclamation here. And when these great folks are able to spend a long time with us, we have a lot of accomplishments to make sure we recognize them for. A proclamation to Dr. Dave- David Meara upon his retirement as Executive Director of Technology for Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas Dr. David Meara came to Stafford County Public Schools in 1996 following a successful career as a Marine Corps officer and aviator, where he attained the final rank of Lieutenant Colonel, and whereas he served as the division's initial Assistant Technology Specialist from 1996 to 1999, during which he designed, developed, and administered an assistive technology program, including establishing an assistive technology lab. And whereas, after serving as Director of Technology for Fredericksburg City Public Schools from 1999 to 2002, Dr. Meara served as Executive Director of Technology at Stafford County Public Schools from 2002 through 2017, and whereas he was an adjunct faculty member at George Mason University and the University of Mary Washington as Assistant Technology and Instructor of Technology Leadership Courses, and whereas he served as Region III Representative to the Virginia Technology Advisory Committee for four years, and as a member of the Virginia School Boards Association and on the virtual task force for two consecutive years, and received 2002 Virginia Regional III Excellence in Educational Technology Leadership Award. And whereas Dr. Meara directed an implementation of an innovative wireless wide-area network leveraging freestyle tower space to support the movement from modems and T1 connectivity to high-speed connectivity at all schools and office sites. And whereas he led the institution of the division's Technology Lead Teacher, TLT Initiative, which served as a precursor to the Instructional Technology Resource Teacher Program. And whereas he led the implementation and management of the JRTC program in Stafford County Public Schools from its inception in 2004 to 2012, during which four out of five high schools implemented JRTC programs. And whereas Dr. Meara garnered support from local governing bodies to fund a five-year project to link all schools and selected county facilities with fiber optic cable. And whereas he oversaw the redesign of the division's security camera system from analog to digital IP-based systems, enabling staff to monitor and record activity remotely through a secure internet connection. And whereas he facilitated the division's move to Google Collaboration Platform as an integral part of the division's C5W strategy. Now therefore be it proclaimed, our esteemed appreciation for Dr. David Meara's years of service to Stafford County Public Schools, adopted by the school board on this day, on this 27th day of June, 2017.
I think he even got to Prairie Ford there, didn't he, didn't we?
That's right.
I was just in a really good mood. I'm very rarely in a good mood. Just be nice.
All right. Moving along, we are going to move to our advisory committee. Under our special presentations, we will have our advisory committee reports this evening. First, I know on behalf of the board, we want to thank everybody who participates in these advisory committee groups. It's certainly an important process, and we really thank you for your time. And we, this night, we're going to start with our Capital Improvement Plan, CIP Advisory Committee, and I will... All right.
That's great.
Excellent. Let's get set up here.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. Dr. Benson.
Welcome back and congratulations.
I'm Melissa Ayers. I'm the chairperson for the Capital Improvement Planning Advisory Committee. And this evening, first of all, I'd like to introduce our committee members, some of which are here this evening. We have Mr. Jim Neese of Brock Hill. And if you are here, just stand up, wave your hand. R.C. Stevens of George Washington. Bianca Branch of Acquia District. Adam Holmes of Garrisonville. Walter Ham of Acquia. And a lot of the thank you to Jennifer Spindl and to Scott Haran for their support and quick responses to all of our questions in multiple meetings and the sit-downs that we had during this term. Today, I'd like to talk about some of the highlights from what we did this year, some of the planned activities for the next year coming, and what we'd like from you all. So, the activity highlights from this year are focusing on high school aspects. Talk is, there's a new high school coming. We don't know when, but we want to be ready. And so our goal is to help Stafford County Public Schools be ready and get those high-level requirements ready by talking to people and understanding what it is that we want from our new high school. And so in doing so, the focus is once again on aspects. We have spoken with some of the staff interviewing them. We have a communication plan, and we also have some site visits done. So, the interviews were with Ms. Pam Kale, Mr. Tom Nichols, Ms. Carrie Neely, Ms. Cherie Johnson, and Dr. Bruce Benson. And what we wanted to get from them is their vision about, from the staff level, from educators, what high school, what the C5W approach in mind would look like. And what we mean by "look like," we mean the features of that school. We're not looking to design it, and we're not looking for the high-level cost of it that is not inside of our bailiwick. What we want to focus on, what programs we want to present and have ready for our school. Where some of the things that came out of that was with environmental classrooms. Use the entire space to teach. Use the entire space, whatever that footprint is for our school, to educate and to collaborate with our students and staff. Collaboration is for all in the building. Multi-task storage, technology as a tool and not a crutch, some of the things you want to look into, and also an environment once again for all levels of learners. We have created a purpose statement for us to present to the public when it comes to releasing a press release. We're here now briefing you all, and the next step will be to do that press release and those articles. And the Communication Office is going to help us do that. One thing I'd like to add is that Mrs. Kale and Mr. Nichols have agreed to be our champions for this effort. So I appreciate their doing that for us and helping us along. One thing that we have done is, there's been a site visit to Colgan High School, and it was not just folks from the CPAC. It involved a contingent of Stafford County Public Schools. I know the final performing arts attended, and also some folks from Facilities Division attended as well. And they brought back some highlights about, maybe some of the things that we can use in the next school as far as, once again, high-level features and requirements from that facility. Our statement is more of a purpose, is that it's a succinct statement that'll convey our efforts in gathering this education specifications. And we want to give you an understanding of what we've done to date, once again, with the Colgan High School visit. And the next thing will be a press release. So what's next? We want to engage our stakeholders and identify who they are. So we're talking about locus business leadership. We're talking about parent, teacher, and student leadership. We're talking about the other Stafford County Public School advisory committees. Next up, for site visits, not just Stafford County Public School high schools, ones that are leaning forward, like some of the things that happened over with the Brookpoint Library, and some of the things that are happening in other schools right now. They're already leaning forward, looking towards what to do next for our schools with the C5W in mind, with the 21st Century Learner in mind already. And there are some recommended facilities. So if there's a facility that you know of that we can go take a look at and see what they've done with their space and how they're using it to collaborate with the folks that are in their buildings, we'll go view that one. We also intend to have surveys and focus groups, talking to those stakeholders, talking to the people here in Stafford County, to hear and gather, once again, get a high-level big group of requirements so that we can whittle it down when the time comes. And lastly, but not leastly, school board guidance. Let us know, rudder guidance. If we're off-base, bring us back in. What's next additionally to that is, we could use some more CPAC members. We are, we have one, at least one person for each division, I believe, right now. But we could use more. Specifically, students. I've learned being on a couple of other advisory committees that our students have a perspective that we, who are not in school, don't have. We don't think that way anymore. So some of the best information I have gleaned has come from the student member in the advisory committee. So if you all, anyone could recommend someone, nominate someone to be on the committee for next year, we appreciate that. Also, our communication effort. We are going to work with the Strategic Communication Division to build a communication plan, release press releases, emails to parents, articles in the committee newsletter, and P-Star flyers to put that word out, to get excitement about what's to come, and also to receive that information, and so that we can, if not compile it all from direct interactions with folks, we can compile it from indirectly, because they'll respond to these pieces of information being sent to them, and then we can filter it. So I've kind of jumped ahead with the requests. We're not asking a lot, just if you know of anyone, student members or adult members in the Stafford County that are interested to become members of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, we appreciate your assistance. And once again, guidance to support us to prioritize the requirements that we have going for the year coming. We appreciate that, too. And to support streamlining the scope for this effort. So I appreciate your support. I appreciate my, I call them my team, the team support on this committee. And if there are no questions for me, I am closing.
Sure. Hi, it's nice to see you back here.
Yeah. First, I want to apologize. Between my surgery and the moving and everything, I wasn't very present at most of the meetings. But you were in good hands with Mr. Haran, and especially with Jennifer. So, one of the things that I wanted to ask about, I really liked the idea of bringing students in, because they can give a perspective- in because they can give a perspective of, you know, hey, our high schools right now are missing X and Y and Z, and that would really help. Is there a way that we can offer them volunteer hours for their participation in?
I have that written down as well, community service hours for, or even credit towards, you know, a government class or a quiz grade, and I think Mr. Nichols can figure that out. Right, Don?
It would be nice to offer something.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. So just a little.
Thank you.
Look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the, the other thing is, I know Walter Hamm and I both served on the education, or the elementary education, educational spec committee when we were establishing what we wanted our new elementary schools to look like. Did you guys talk a little bit about what might be applicable from that exercise, which was essentially an entire summer, we all got together and we talked about things relating to building a new school? Did you guys have that conversation about what might be applicable from that exercise to maybe looking at a, at a high school rebuild?
Yes, we did. Every, we brainstormed what we can use, what information's been done already. So the, what happened with the middle school, elementary school EdSpecs process, the lessons learned from that, we are using those and applying that to what we, to building this process and what we're going for. So we were definitely using what's happened in the past, what people have learned from what's happened, to apply to what we're doing now and moving forward with that.
Great.
Yes. Thanks.
I have one question. Thanks, Melissa, it was a great brief, and I know your team's worked hard.
Yes, they have.
On the CIP, Walter and crew. The one question that I have, and I think that's a benefit, no matter what school we build, I get questions like, so why don't you just build a 5,000 kid high school? I mean, no, I mean, why don't you, why isn't it 3,000? Why isn't it 4,000? Why isn't it 1,000? Right? So I would like the, the educational, and I know the data's out there, I know I haven't looked for it, but I'd like you guys to kind of focus in on that and say, you know, the reason that we build a 2250 or a 2400, or whatever that magic number is, is because of these reasons. To ding, to ding, to ding. To kind of, to kind of, you know, solidify that, that number first of all, and then, and then talk about the educational specifications within that number. Because that's kind of a recurring question that I get, you know, why'd you buy, why'd you only build it as a 2,000 high school? Or why did you only, you know, so anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to even go farther on that, rather than say this is why we do what we do, you could explore to see if we should do something different. And if it turns out that we should continue to do what we're doing, that's fine, but if you think we should do something different, then that should come to the board as well because we always want to, to leave those doors open, and a committee such as yours is a good opportunity for us to have that pulse of the community. I really like your, your inclusion of the stakeholders in the early stages. I think that, that that would have really helped a lot if we had done more of that when we rebuilt Stafford High School. Because we heard from the community, you know, as we were going along, and it turned out that there were some parts that, you know, had not been put into that school that were actually very important to the community, the automotive building, you know, one to, to begin with, but, but involving those stakeholders is so important, and this, these buildings belong to the community, they're the ones paying for it. And I think the price tag we've been quoted, and it may even go up, as everything else does, was what, about 120 million for the next high school? So this is going to be a significant investment for Stafford County, so the more, you know, you can do to help us.
Right.
You know, look forward is terrific, but I like your plan.
Right, thank you. I think, my vote, my thought is personally, is that if folks are involved, then they'll support. So bring them in and, and hear them out. So that's what we want to do, we want to hear and be as honest and transparent in what we're doing upfront as possible.
Any more questions? All right, thank you very much, and thank you to the members of the committee for the hard work done and the continuing work. So, all right, next up will be our Fine and Performing Arts Group. I do believe they said they were not singing it for us, but we were hoping, I know. Well, I'm not going to sing. Interpretive dance?
I do like some interpretive dance.
School chair should dance a little.
No, you really don't.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Conley, and I am the chairman of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee this school year. Thank you in advance for allowing me to speak on behalf of our committee this evening. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee has grown in number this school year, we are proud to say, all members with various ties to the Fine and Performing Arts in Stafford Schools. We are pleased to have several Stafford County arts students on our committee as well. Their insight has been crucial as we have implemented several projects this year and worked towards identifying short and long-term goals in a five-year plan, which align to our committee's mission. One of our new ventures this year was the sensory-friendly performances we offer to our community in partnership with the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, the Special Education Advisory Committee, and Stafford County Public Schools. We hosted a concert by the Rapahannic Pops Orchestra in February, and a theatrical production of Peter Pan by the Stafford High School Theater Department in April, which also enabled our community to see the lovely new theater at Stafford High School. As part of their research in creating their own sensory-friendly version of Peter Pan, Stafford Theater students attended a sensory-friendly performance at the Kennedy Center and met with members of the cast and crew, as well as employees in the Accessibility Department at the Kennedy Center. We were proud to provide these sensory-friendly opportunities for individuals with sensory sensitivities in order to be able to experience arts performances that are welcoming and inviting to their particular needs. Approximately 450 people attended the two free performances, and our goal is to increase community participation in future endeavors in this field. Our second major project was to generate a student survey in order to gather information from seniors regarding access to arts education programs throughout their high school career. Our goal is to foster maximum participation in our arts programs. Questions that we hope to discover answers to include, what motivates our students to enroll in fine arts courses? What factors contribute to our students continuing or not continuing to enroll in fine arts courses? Are we lacking fine and performing arts courses that our students are interested in taking? How can we maximize staffing for fine and performing arts courses in Stafford County? Our goal is to implement this survey during the 2017-2018 school year, and next year's committee will then review the data to provide recommendations to the school board with the intent to eventually provide access for all students at each school in the fine arts. Lastly, the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee plans to review and provide input for updating the arts section of the current high school educational specifications. This has been earmarked as a multi-year project for our committee with our targeted completion in May of 2018. This year, we conducted several teacher-focused groups, sessions, meeting with groups of music, visual arts, and theater arts teachers to gain a deeper understanding of the needs and desires of our arts programs. A recurring theme heard from all arts teachers was the need for storage of materials and instruments, as well as the need for more and/or better utilized instructional space in order to meet the needs of their various art curriculum. In particular, our music teachers expressed a need for space, for storage, and continued availability to current digital technology, as well as an increase in staffing in order to provide a greater variety of course offerings. Our visual arts teachers also expressed the need for storage of materials and student work, and they also valued 2D and 3D display areas in order to highlight and showcase the work of our incredibly talented visual arts students. Our theater arts teachers stress the need for storage and versatility of space in order to meet the needs of their curriculum. The theater is considered the instructional classroom of the drama department, and there is a need for production space, green rooms, dressing rooms. The new theater at Stafford High School has wonderful lighting, sound, and acoustics. However, there are some concerns regarding the limited audience capacity, and we have difficulty at many of our larger county events in providing enough seating for our patrons in the current theater spaces that we have. Our committee also plans to tour selected high schools to further collect information regarding art facilities. In coordination with our terrific Facilities Department and other advisory committees, we began our site visits in Prince William County at Colgan High School. While Colgan is an arts magnet school, and as such has a much greater emphasis on its fine arts facilities, we felt it was still important to visit in order to gather ideas and ask a lot of questions. One highlight of our visit to Colgan was their outdoor amphitheater. Located just outside of their cafeteria, the amphitheater has become a very popular area for students to gather and perform, both formally and informally, on their off time. In the upcoming year, our committee will be gathering more information and data to provide you with detailed recommendations in regards to the EdSpecs. We are very proud of the accomplishments of our committee and our students and teachers in the fine arts this school year. We have some highlights for you on this slide, including our impressive all-state honors by students and programs. In addition, we are pleased to share that our high school offerings continue to grow with the implementation of the brand-new music technology course at Stafford High and guitar being offered at two additional high schools next school year. In closing, we first want to thank you for a few additions to the FY18 budget, including adding the adoption of consumable method books for our music programs and music performance assessment fees. These budget items take a financial burden off of our families whose children participate in these programs, like my own. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee does have a few recommendations for the school board. First, for the sixth consecutive year, we are asking you to provide co-curricular supplements for all middle school orchestra and theater arts teachers at the middle school level. Currently, only middle school band and chorus teachers receive compensation for their hard work for our students beyond contract hours. Their hard work and dedication to our students needs to be recognized and compensated appropriately. We have provided you with multiple options for improving the situation, but the most viable one is on the screen right now. Please, continue to support performance viewing opportunities for students, whether for an entire grade level of students, such as the second graders this year, or our sensory-friendly performances for our community. We plan to continue offering sensory-friendly performances in the future, and we greatly appreciate your support for these. And last, please continue to support additional school site visits, perhaps join us on one to gather more information regarding those high school EdSpecs. We plan to visit several more schools in our area to collect information and make further recommendations for the fine arts sections of this document. Some long-term plans for us on the Fine and Performing Arts Committee include, we plan to implement our student survey and collect information on how we can best meet the needs of our fine arts programs and students. We plan to continue to collect information so that we can make formal recommendations for the educational specifications and for high school number six. We plan to review student enrollment and fine arts staffing, in particular, our orchestra programs at the middle and high school levels. Much has been done in the past two years to increase staffing as student enrollment has increased, but we also want to continue to improve parity amongst course offerings and staffing at the secondary level. And we plan to, we plan to provide input regarding the improvements at North Stafford High School. After auditions are completed at Mountain View this summer, North Stafford High School will be the only high school in Stafford without a dedicated orchestra space. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee thanks you for your time. We hope you will take our recommendations into consideration, and we look forward to continuing to support our fine arts students and teachers in the upcoming school year.
Thank you. There any members of the Fine Arts Committee? If you would please stand up, if you are here from the Fine Arts Committee, I know there's a few of you, I can recognize you. Thank you. I would like to especially call out two of our members. Of course, we have two student members who have provided such depth of, of information and a, and a student's perspective that have been helpful. I'm very glad that Caroline will be returning to us, I hope, next year, and it's a wonderful group to work with you all, so. Are there any questions? Yes?
Thank you, that was great, and I, and I love that the committees are talking to each other about, about things.
We share a lot of members, actually.
Yeah, that's, it's great, and, and I'm going to go back to the elementary education specifications again, because there's a, there's a symbiotic relationship between what happened there, what's going to happen for the, for the high school. And when we looked at the elementary side of things, we tried to incorporate, you know, local government and some of the things that they do, Parks and Rec specifically, we included the full-court gym at, at the new Moncur, and what eventually will be the, the new Ferry Farm. And there's a lot of opportunity here for maybe local government to kind of pitch in and help us with some of the costs that, you know, we, we talked about with the, with the elementary stuff, you know, expanding, you talked about not enough, not enough capacity for the theatrical performances and whatnot, and I know that we have a shortage of, of other venues for things like fine arts outside of the school division. And one of your biggest advocates for that was a former board member who used to represent the Aquia District, is Stephanie Johnson. She has been kind of chomping at the bit to, to get that going on the local level, so she may be a good person to contact when you all are talking.
Definitely.
A little bit more about, you know, making these specifications, you know, all-inclusive of local government and what the school division is doing. She, she's, she would be very good for your cause.
We have, we have talked about that, especially with our visit to Colgan, is being able to work with our community to provide access to the facilities in the hopes that that will help us kind of get what the school needs the most.
So if you need any help from us, let us know, we'd be happy to, you know, to come with you to, to meetings and, you know. Coordinate those meetings with some of the folks on the, on the local government side.
Thank you.
Ms. Hazard, I just, unless Scott?
Oh, I was just going to ask, can you make sure our clerk gets a soft copy? If you don't, okay, and can you distribute it to the members of the Fab and also put it on our Fab agenda?
A good point.
On Thursday to include it in our budget priorities discussion? I think we have budget priorities discussion on our old business, so we can.
Thank you.
Because I served as liaison to this committee and I, yes, for six years, at least, you know, for three and a half years I've been on this board, yeah, it's been something that we have all said that we will work on, and, you know, this budget year may be the year we can finally make good progress.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Conley, thank you very much. So I just want to make sure for, do we get, we get the scenario right, that you, the committee recommends scenario three with the orchestra and the drama? Okay, because, you know, the board instituted two years ago, Ms. Hall, that, kind of, I call it the hit list, the priority list on all, when all the committees outbriefed, like you are, here are the things they want, we put it on that list, and we tracked them as a board to make sure they just didn't, you were briefing them and they were falling off, and we, no one addressed them, the issues. So let's, we're going to make sure we get that list after our last committee brief, so, to the board, but yeah, that was a good point, Mr. Haran's getting this into the Fab and taking a look at the costing, and, because these folks, just like all our folks, work hard.
Yes, they do, thank you.
And I'd just like to make a, a final comment. I, I would like the board, this is just me, to look at the scenario four, which would make orchestra, drama, and chorus all at the same percentage of stipend. I, I feel like we should not say that chorus gets less, so, not that scenario three, hey, I want to get somewhere, but I would, just wanted to draw the board's attention to, in my opinion, a parity argument, all of the percentages for somebody in fine arts, and any of us who have either children who are in fine arts or not, know the countless hours that are spent putting on these wonderful performances around our county, so I would really like us to look at that, because that is a stipend, correct? This is the, that's the number. I would really like to see if the board can figure out a way to do that. Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I agree with you, but I also would ask Dr. Benson if he could give us a report perhaps next month on where that study is coming of, the, the various stipends that I believe was underway for a while. I know there's so many things on that list, but, but this is certainly something that needs to be addressed, but I don't want to, you know, leave out the other ones that we've been, you know, considering in, in the past as well, so. Yeah, and I, I know those, those teachers are amazing, I mean, wow.
A lot of time put in after contract hours.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the drama performances are not during the school day. The practices are not during the school day, but.
And it's when, my children, when they were at, in middle school, my oldest son And it's when my children, when they were at, in middle school, my oldest son participated in the pip band for their musical, and his band teacher was earning 4%, and the drama teacher was not. She was earning nothing. So, it's definitely, that parity needs to happen.
Sooner rather than later. All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, thank you very much, and thank you, committee members. So, we will close out with our special presentations this evening with our Technology Advisory Committee.
Walter, are you trying to copy my look tonight with no tie, Walter?
I would direct your attention to the fact this is a technology brief. Technology and IT people don't wear ties.
Okay, thank you.
You have never seen me without a tie before. I specifically took it off for this brief.
See, I noticed that. See, I noticed that, Walter.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Benson, good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you a briefing on behalf of the Technology Advisory Group. Now, the Technology Advisory Group is a bit different than some of the others, including the ones that have briefed you previously this evening. We don't have any separate projects. We serve as a sounding board to the Technology Department. I'll make an observation that about half of my brief was already presented during the recognition of Dr. Mira this evening, so I could omit that, but I'm not going to. If I could, I'd like to recognize members of the committee, if they would stand or raise their hand. We had four parents and citizens, and then a large number of staff and teachers. I would really like to increase the number of citizens and parents next year. And let me echo what the previous briefers have said, is we really need students involved. Whatever the board can do, whatever staff can do to have the right students involved, I've watched them really contribute to all the committees in which I've participated. Now, just to set the stage for the briefing, there are three really big activities that happen this year, and I'll recognize the first one. It's the rollout of Google applications for education. Very large, very visible, as I understand. The board has just been migrated to Google email, so congratulations, and hopefully it wasn't too painful. I'm experiencing this. I've done, been through five migrations in different organizations. Secondly, is the movement toward buying Chromebooks and retiring MacBooks. I'll talk about that later, but you're getting four times as many technology platforms, which increases your capability. And lastly is a more general activity, and that is integrating enterprise IT management into as much functionality as possible, digital storage, data collection, and those types of things. Now, as I move forward, all of the things I'm going to talk about are Technology Department activities for this year, and most of them are aligned with the current strategic plan for technology for the division. I believe most of you have seen this graphic before, or a similar graphic, talking about projected needs for computer replacement. This particular one is for desktop computers. This includes a large number of divided devices that you've approved for Stafford High School very recently, and devices that you're going to be presented with in the near future. I'm not sure if it's at the meeting this evening or at a future meeting, but there's, this is all planning for next year. These meet the criteria, they're set down by state standards for increasing physical and human technology infrastructure and online standards for SOL testing. Also meets the criteria in a technology plan for refresh of technology within the division. Similar graphic for laptops. One thing that I note for you is that you have an increasing number of laptops available. You also see that there are more carts available for some of the schools, and that's because several of them are behind on their refresh on technology. Several of them also are on a different cycle. If you want information on the specifics, we can provide that for you. This also addresses the same criteria within your technology management plan that the previous slide did. Very important slide here, the ongoing fiber optic project. I would direct your attention to the green line at the bottom of the page. First and foremost, Mr. McOscar, the fiber optic access for Ferry Farm is now 65% complete and will be done by September.
Hold on. So, when does Dave Mira retire again? Has he already retired?
Okay, this is a question that I'm going to defer to the IT staff.
All right, good, good. Thank you very much, Walter. Walter, just real quick, as since I have the microphone on, point of privilege, is it three to five years? Is that our sweet spot for the computer? Is that what we're, just to give us a frame of reference on the chart?
That is correct. Industry standard is considered three years, no later than five, depending upon the platform and the type of technology. In business, we normally turn over, try to turn over once every three years. Let me tell you, we've got some pretty old platforms sitting back in the closet that we've hung on to as backups, unfortunately. Moving on, a little more information on this slide. The southern loop has been completed to include Falmouth, Drew Middle, Stafford High, Gale, Transportation and Fleet Services. A northern loop is a complete loop which provides redundancy for a good number of the schools. That is industry standard in doing fiber optics when possible. It also provides you some insurance, given all the construction in Stafford County and particularly the large courthouse project getting ready to start. Having dealt with those things before, you can say that people try not to hit utilities. They will. It just happens. CIP funding is being used and is within the budget. Google rollout. The main takeaway for this is you are now moving into true enterprise IT management, central management, common IT platforms. For those of you who've been familiar with schools and their platforms, that hasn't happened until now. It's not done, but it's nearing completion. A bit of clarification here, the student accounts will be enabled next school year. I believe you know this, but I'll repeat it. High school students get full email access, meaning internal, external. Middle school students get only internal access. There is no access for elementary school students. Quick snapshot of how the IT department is supporting your teaching and learning summit. I believe you are all very familiar with teaching and learning summit, so I won't belabor that anymore. Moving to Chromebooks, the most important aspect of this is there is no loss of capability, even one-for-one, when we're replacing a MacBook with a Chromebook for the purposes for which they are used in a class. I am sure there's people in this room who would disagree with me on that, but been told the way we're using them, it is equivalent capability. Because all of these MacBook, excuse me, Chromebook carts are being provided, a number of the computer labs are being decommissioned in the elementary schools, and they are now being used for various different things. In many of those schools, they need the space. It goes to what the committee that provide input for Moncur Elementary School found says, almost any room can be a computer lab if you configure them correctly and you have the mobile computers available. Assistive technology, you talked a good bit about that when recognizing Dr. Mira. It's not a large part of the IT operation, but it's a very important part. Student information system, for those of you who've been with the board for a while, you know that this has had some fits and starts, to say the least. It's getting to the point at which it's working relatively well. Most importantly, it is being integrated with other enterprise systems and with systems outside the schools, so making it a very important platform. Stafford County Schools actually initiated the Virginia Synergy Users Group, now members of 13 different divisions. There's power in numbers, and we believe a lot more can be done with the vendor, provided that there's the Users Group getting behind the issues we find with the student information Software review and use guidelines. This is not one that gets a lot of attention, but is also very key to enterprise IT management and a well-run IT operation, not to mention the safety of students. Safety and security. As you'll notice, this district has the highest amount of funding provided for a grant for security. Security in the schools has improved drastically, and when I go into schools, elementary, middle, high schools, while I'm not a security expert, what I see is impressive to me relative to what I know is in many other facilities that I've been in. Infrastructure upgrades. Most of you know that a computer is only good as its connection. Many of the schools that we have right now are still using category five cable. Some of you know what that is. It is very similar to the cable that is used inside your house. For a point of reference, it allows one-tenth of the speed and capability that is needed to be able to fully use our fiber optic cables and the newest equipment that's installed in schools. So, it's really essential to rewire the schools. So, you can see there, six schools were done last summer, four schools this summer, two will remain after this summer, Stafford Middle and AG Wright. Moncur is on hold because it should be getting a fully capable system during the rebuild. Technology plan update, I can tell you from the last two years that your technology department has been itching to rewrite their technology plan. The reason they haven't is because Commonwealth of Virginia has not rewritten theirs, and they're waiting for that guidance. I had the pleasure of accompanying Dr. Wolfenbarger to a VDOE meeting, which was convened, to get input for their technology plan. For me, it was very enlightening. Enlightening because had the opportunity to see the IT issues from many other divisions, and as you might imagine, some of those divisions are at a very basic level. We need a few desktops. We need the basics. Not saying that we are doing as the best within the state, but I came away thinking that Stafford County is doing fairly well. And I look forward to our committee participating in developing the new technology plan, and I really believe it'll be next year. Recommendations, they're the same as you saw last year. Perhaps the most important thing to understand is that a long-range plan for teaching and learning has to be the primary catalyst to understanding what tools are required, i.e. the software and the hardware in all its forms. Form follows function. Devices will become less important in the future, as learning can be done anyplace, and therefore, the infrastructure is going to be very important. Very, very high-speed capability throughout all the school facilities, but one of the other factors is how do we provide that type of connectivity to students when they're off-campus? We have been talking to the County Telecommunications Commission about that, and that's one of the things we want to work on next year. And finally, my favorite slide. If we had a few minutes, I'd say, let's have a pop quiz and see who knows the meaning of all these terms and concepts. These are but a few. They're changing every day, but it's really important to understand them. I'm going to concentrate, just as a summary, on two of the individual concepts. First, and most important from my point of view, is digital literacy. I'm going to paraphrase and make my own definition on this, and it's the understanding of an ability to use technology to optimally achieve personal and organizational objectives and serve day-to-day needs. Know how to use technology to get as much done as you can. Digital literacy is important for you, the school board. It's important for the teachers. Digital literacy comes with being a digital native. Most, if not all, of our students are digital natives. The second most important definition here, although many of them are, is digital divide. Digital divide is a concept that shows that certain factors limit digital literacy. Many of them are the same factors that limit education and regular literacy, often demographics, economics, sociological factors. But the penalties for lack of digital literacy in the future may be worse than they've been for other literacy in the past. And bringing in the issue of digital natives versus those who are not. Us guys, we have to work harder to really understand how technology should be used. Finally, my many thanks to your IT staff for doing a great job, as they have over the last few years that I've watched them. Their jobs will only become more important, and a special thanks to Dr. Mira as he rides off into the sunset. Your questions, please.
Any questions? Mr. Hirons.
The one thing that you did say in there, and I think, I don't think it's any secret that I have a concern about this, is the reduction of the theory that we can move from computer lab to mobile computer lab, if you will. And one of the things in your last slide of all the terms you don't have is STEM, STEM education. My concern about losing computer labs is we have been pretty focused, not only in Stafford County, but as a nation, on STEM education. And STEM education is not learning how to turn a computer on and open a Word document and create a Word document. That is digital literacy that you articulated well. STEM education is open the computer, why is the computer built this way? When I hit the power button, why does it start to light up? How do I program so I can create the Word application, if you will? My concern is, as we move to a mobile computer lab, do we lose any ability to deliver that STEM education at that high level? I mean, you know, the young ladies that came before us here from HH Pool, you know, they went through elementary school where we were probably pretty focused. They probably heard STEM education awful lot. They were probably all members of the STEM clubs in their elementary schools, and they all benefited from, most likely, most having a computer lab that they went to. So, I am concerned about losing a computer lab, if you will, a standalone lab. Now, if they're being replaced, and, you know, we have space issues in our schools, absolutely, but if they're being replaced with STEM classrooms or STEM labs, where not only are we able to deliver, you know, computer engineering education, which is within the STEM realm, but the other aspects of STEM education, I have more comfort, you know. A traditional computer lab, yeah, that's probably on its way out, but a STEM laboratory that, or a STEM classroom that enables students and enables teachers to deliver education on a whole curriculum of STEM, I think is something that I'm concerned. on a whole curriculum of STEM, I think is something that I'm concerned if we don't continue to have in our schools. And it's something I'd really like to get a sense from the committee over the coming year of where is STEM education going for us and what do we need within our schools? And this kind of gets back to relating to talking about our school specs, the various levels, and I think it's called out in the education, or in the elementary spec specifically, this need for a STEM laboratory, if you will, a STEM classroom. So that's just one observation from this year's work and kind of thoughts about next year's work for you.
Yeah. A couple of points to that is, one, it's my understanding that's discretion of the principle at the school as to whether they want to remove the computer lab. Second thing is, what you just brought up was a discussion we had while I was going over this brief with your IT department, is that are we going to be getting rid of all of the desktops? Not necessarily. We need to understand where they're important, where they should be used. Thirdly, what you just described as STEM labs and perhaps more specialized computers were really part of what we looked at during the elementary education spec study. So it really comes down to what you just said. We need to look at and talk to elementary teachers, middle school teachers, and high school teachers to see what mix of other computer assets they need. I will tell you, having looked at a number, two or a number of other schools, there are STEM labs or IT labs that have what you talked about. So, yes, we need to look at that.
Good to hear.
Other questions?
Good job, Walter.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And thank you to the members of the committee. It looks like maybe we should take a quick five-minute break.
Five-minute break?
Okay. Five minutes.
What's the point of privilege? Where does this come from?
It's just something to do with... Give us five minutes. I'm going to reconvene our meeting if everybody could take their seats. Thank you all for that indulgence. Next, we move on to our citizens' comments. I do have a sign-in sheet for people who have signed in. However, if you did not sign in, that does not mean that you do not get to speak. I do ask if you have not signed in on the sheet to come forward. There should be a clipboard tonight. It is to my left, to your right, to sign in. So I will go over the requirements concerning public comment, and then what I will do is I will call the first three names that I have on the sheet. If you all would just come up and line up after each other, it just helps with not crawling over everybody, all that stuff. And then I will make a general invitation for anybody else who wishes to speak to come forward. So, speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents the organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. We use the stoplight system. When you start speaking, the green will come on. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have one minute remaining. Obviously, when the red light goes, you are out of time. I usually allow you about five seconds to wrap up, and then we will move on because we have, everybody is allotted the three minutes. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Tonight is public comment. We do not dialogue with members. We may make comments later or ask for further information from our staff, but we will not be asking for it in a dialogue fashion with the speaker. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So I will start off with Jennifer Rockdy, Sarah Rockdy, and Patrick Mooney.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you'll forgive me, I need to sit. It's difficult for me to stand for long periods of time. My name is Jennifer Rockdy, and my family lives in the Hartwood District. I'm here tonight to address my son's transfer request to Stafford High School. It makes no sense to me that at one point John had been assigned to Stafford High School and his course request received by the Guidance Office there. I thought it was simply a matter of timing that I had not yet received official notice of his approved transfer request. Central Office sites fall out from the March redistricting of Colonial Forge as the reason John cannot now attend Stafford as his older siblings did. I placed a courtesy call to Melanie Daniel to let her know John would be attending CGS, and I was waiting for approval of John's transfer request. It appears that Mrs. Daniels' inquiries, which I appreciate, along with inquiries made by my School Board representative regarding phone calls not being returned by Superintendent Benson or Mrs. Caleb, set someone in Central Office. John's information was all transferred back to Colonial Forge and his transfer request denied. Why, after having his information sent to Stafford, would Central Office now send it back to Colonial Forge? Sending John to Colonial Forge places an undue burden on my family. My husband's defense job site relocated to Maryland this year, and I am the primary source of transportation for John. I was informed that time and distance to school are not a reason for approval of a transfer request. In this case, Central Office is wrong. My disability means that I have to move slowly and prepare carefully. Time spent taking John back and forth to Colonial Forge takes time away from my family. There are also days when I would need assistance with John's transportation. John and I have a support system at Stafford that would enable him to take advantage of high school opportunities outside the classroom. In addition, my daughter currently teaches there and could assist as needed once her duties are completed. School officials tell us how important it is for students to get a well-rounded education, to include extracurricular activities, and the ability to meet with teachers as needed before and after school. It would be easier for me to have John go to Colonial Forge and just ride the bus to and from school and not participate in activities. However, it is not in John's best interest to do so. If I can make the effort to support my son, to ensure that he has the best high school career possible, then it seems to me you should support him too. It doesn't cost you anything. You have been elected by the parents of this county to represent them and their children. Central Office has drawn a hard line due to politics. John is a victim of their hard-line stance. Central Office would rather pull a student from the school that best serves him and lock the disability of a parent in order to pursue its own agenda. John's interests are not being served, and this debacle fails to serve the mission statement for Stafford County Public Schools. I request that the School Board acts as our duly-elected representatives and ensure Central Office returns John to Stafford High School. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Rockdy, and my family lives in the Hartwood District. I am an older sister of John Rockdy, and I am a senior at Randolph-Macon College. Being at Stafford High School helped me to be more involved in extracurricular activities, get support from teachers, and later be successful as a college student. As my mother, Jennifer Rockdy, stated, we have a wonderful support system at Stafford, which I believe greatly contributed to my being able to come out of my shell and discover academic and other successes. If John were not able to go to Stafford, which is much closer to our neighborhood, he would not be able to have the same advantages that his siblings have enjoyed. I was able to go in early and stay late with teachers for tutoring, be a part of the theater and choral departments, and do marching band. I would not have been able to participate in these wonderful, well-rounded activities had my own transfer request been denied. As my other siblings could attest, because of the ability to fully participate in said activities and the Commonwealth Governor's School community at the Stafford site, I have been able to use those resources and skills learned even today in my academic, extracurricular, and jobs at the college. It is imperative that my brother John has access to these same resources and skills at Stafford High School. It simply makes sense, and it wouldn't cost anything to send his information back to Stafford. Please remember that John, like all other students, is not simply another number or demographic for politics, but a student who deserves support. Thank you.
Actually, before you start, let me just give a quick thing. If anybody else wishes to speak, if you want to go ahead and come forward, I didn't want you to worry, there were people rushing towards you in the back, but if you do want to go ahead and speak, if you want to go ahead and get out of your seats, just to come forward. So, go ahead. Excuse me. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Patrick Mooney. I live at 37 St. Williams Way. I've been in Stafford for eleven years since I came here at the end of my Navy career. I have five children that have attended Stafford schools, and the youngest one is at Mountain View right now as a rising sophomore. I'm speaking tonight because of the calendar vote that you're going to have tonight, and I want to commend you because I think, though the process, from my observation, has been somewhat flawed, I think you're getting to the right point. The vote on the calendar for tonight, for 2018-2019, I strongly recommend you to say yes. Why is that? First of all, any change should be weighed against the unintended consequences. We've had far too many things in our country where somebody has made a change, and then afterwards we found out the predicted benefits weren't there, the costs were greater, and we haven't weighed them sufficiently, and then we're left picking up the pieces. Just go up the road forty miles and look at our senators arguing about fixing the Affordable Care Act because of all the promises that were broken in that, and we realize, regardless of what political side you're on, we have a mess, and it's largely a mess because people making decisions didn't know all the other things were going to happen. The one thing about the status quo you know is, you know what you got. When you change a calendar, it may seem like an academic exercise or something unimportant, but a change in a calendar which impacts summer, impacts families, impacts vacations, family reunions. Many of these things are planned years in advance. People have commitments to time shares or vacation homes where the week in August that they have may be the week that you turn into a school week and put them at a very severe financial disadvantage or have them lose their vacation. Bottom line is, if you're going to change something like this, please do it with a lot of time in advance, and not just one year, but several years so people can make the adjustments. The other thing is, please do it in a forthright manner. The survey that was put out initially was so leading and so designed for a specific outcome that it was offensive. You know, people are intelligent, and they realize when they're being led down a direction. So I ask you to vote yes. If you want to make this change in the long run, do so campaigning to the voters that you're going to do it, and explain in broad daylight, not behind closed doors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I came here as you were giving the rules, so I think you said I need to say where I am from and my name.
Name, and where are you from?
Okay, I'm Erin Ewing. I'm from the Hartwood District, and I'm sorry to say that this is only my second appearance at a School Board meeting. Shame on me. I was empowered to speak tonight based off of this discussion last week surrounding the calendars. Much like the last speaker commented on the surveys that went out, it obviously seemed a bit leading. I have two young children. One's going into kindergarten and one is going into fifth grade, so a lot of that information they were looking for, while it might have been relevant, it wasn't necessarily relevant to me. And I ask that, in the future, the committees are kind of steered a little bit more, maybe the development of the metrics you're looking to evaluate. It was appalling to see somebody quote the same stat I could find in the two seconds off of weather.com as a rationale for whether to or whether not to change a school division calendar for the next two years. And that's, I'm not bad-mouthing anybody, I just couldn't believe that was used as a justification. And the other thing is, I think it's important to look at the elementary children, look at the instructional time in the beginning of the year versus the end of the year. Trying to have kindergartners all be in class for the entire day because it's too hot to have recess, I think is something worth considering. Having bus drivers on that board, something worth considering. All in all, I just think it's important to have those data points, actually look at data, make informed decisions. And I was really, I was impressed by your questions and your questions and your questions last week. I appreciated it. I think that it's important to show data, this is why we're making the decision for everybody's children. Thank you very much.
Don't forget to sign in.
Right here?
Yep, right there.
All right.
Thank you. All right, and sure, come on forward.
My name is Kristen Barnes. I believe I am in the Rock Hill District. What else did you need to know? I don't remember.
Just...
That's it? Okay, good. At the risk of sounding a little redundant, I know that there was a lot of discussion about this last week, and then again tonight. I did, however, just want to reemphasize that there is a significant support for a post-Labor Day start still in our community, and I think that, especially I think that second survey that was still, over half of the people that responded to that survey still were in support of a traditional post-Labor Day start. I think the process this year has been shown to have a few issues, so I think to make a decision as large as this one with a process that can probably be perfected the next time around, it might be a better time to make a change. And if we do make a change, as large as this one is, I hope that, as the previous speakers said, that we do this well in advance, I think for the 18, 19 school year. Like, people have already made plans for next summer. It would be just too soon. I hope that if there is a large change made, that it will be a couple of years down the road to really give people a time to prepare. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Don't forget to sign in. My usual, try to remember.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I actually am on the Calendar Committee this year. I listened to the speakers, and I think that's probably right. I think we, as a member, need to fine-tune our process a little bit. I think our process could use some change. I was reading the Board Doc's agenda online for your last meeting. It was Item 704 regarding the school calendar, and I think there might just be some mistakes in the timeline of the staff background report, because that's not quite how I remember it. I remember walking into our first meeting on April 10th and being handed this calendar. It was one calendar, it was already made, and it was stamped "Pre-Labor Day Draft." So we didn't do that, as I recall, on May 3rd. The first meeting, as I remember, was largely spent brainstorming how to justify a pre-Labor Day calendar change. Some of the comments, I thought, were a little puzzling, and I wrote a couple down. A staff member said, you know, that things like, "Well, people may not know what they really want, we just need to ask in a different way." Another one said, "It's not about test scores." Another one said, "Well, since we can't prove it, we have to think of something else." Another Office Committee staff member said, "We need to offer another rationale that's not about evidence or proof. We're not going to fight that fight because we're not going to win it. We need to think of other reasons." And people seem to concede that, and I think that's how the slogan "More Time Before Tests" was born. I think we need to work off a fact, not propaganda, and do a real committee next time. We also didn't create a survey at our first meeting. What I recall is, and I have emails to back that up, two weeks after our first meeting, we received an email from staff with a pre-made survey not created by us, and the email stated the survey was going out in forty-eight hours, and we had twenty-four hours to comment on it. Comment... Comments were largely ignored. Suggestions like, I suggested putting the actual start date of August 13th. That didn't make it to the final cut. A yes-no question about starting early, that didn't make the final cut. And question number six, which was about high school scholarship deadlines. A high school principal actually backed me up on that, saying it didn't matter and it was misleading because scholarships are offered year-round. We also had a lot of extra staff members that were not committee members frequently sit in on our meetings and participate. And I sit on a lot of your committee meetings, but I'm only allowed as an observer. I would really love to participate and talk. Our meetings were not advertised in public, so I'm not sure how they knew to come by. I'm sure the public would have liked to come. For the most part, we didn't really create much of anything. The only thing we really did was move the spring break on the post-Labor Day calendar. One of our high school principals assured everyone it didn't matter if we had time off right before SOLs or right, or several weeks before SOLs. Historically, it had no outcomes on SOLs. But, thank you. Just work on our process maybe a little better next time.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to address the board? Okay, nobody leaping forward, then I will close public comments, and we will move on to school board member comments. Well, we'll start with committee reports. Ms. Egan, you want to start us?
Yeah, I'll make this one quick. I had requested a three-on-three meeting last night in order to update the Board of Supervisors on the latest news on funding strategy for the Moncur rebuild. It was myself and Ms. Decatur, Ms. Healy, Ms. Hazard, Mr. McCosker showed up as well, Mr. Fulmer, Mr. Haran, and from the Board of Supervisor side, it was Ms. Sellers and Ms. Mauer. Again, we're going to, we have, there's an agenda item on this, and so it's probably going to be a lively, lengthy conversation, so I will just, I'll leave it at that, and I'll pick it back up again when we get back over to the agenda item. How's that? An effort to save some time.
Real quick, the Fab has a joint Fab meeting with the Board of Supervisor Fab meeting, which I suspect will be a little bit of carryover from the three-on-three meeting. And our action, the result of our action tonight, will go in to feed some of the discussion in that joint Fab committee as well. The good news is, the members of the Board of Supervisors are working with us and chatting with us about these important items. Immediately following the Fab, the joint Fab, which begins at 6:00 PM on Thursday, we will have a school board Fab meeting immediately following, assuming there's time.
Mr. Hiren? Before, I forget, Ms. Healy just reminded me that the topic of the joint Fab committee meeting came up last night, and we were notified that at least two, maybe even three members, regular members, would not be at the joint Fab meeting tomorrow night, or Thursday night, because there was fire and rescue graduation. So you may want to contact someone over there, make sure someone's going to show up.
We will wait for their notification that it's canceled. As of so far, they have not notified us. So as far as our situation is, we have a joint Fab committee meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other committee?
I would just like to say, just to dovetail on both those comments, is that Ms. Mauer sent out an email today to all of us about, you know, we all showed up in strength for these joint meetings. And I know it's a busy time for the Board of Supervisors with everything going on, but, you know, she kind of indicated that she kind of wished her Board of Supervisors to her left and right would try to show up to these joint meetings, you know, when they can, just so, because there's so much, there's so many important things and funding that it gives us the opportunity as, you know, a board, board-to-board, to kind of talk about these, talk through these things, so they're better prepared for their meetings. That's all. I appreciate Ms. Mauer's comments on that.
All right, moving on to our board member reports. All right, who wants to get us started? Ms. Egan, get us started.
Again, I'll keep them, mine short. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Brookpoint High School students who recently graduated, and to Tammy Hauck for her first official graduation as principal at Brookpoint High School. So, and of course, staff always does an amazing job keeping everybody, you know, on schedule, on time, on point. And I will tell you that it was, you know, the announcements were being made, and you will be outside in one minute, and it was, it's a finely, you know, tuned machine graduation at Brookpoint. So I just want to say congratulations again to Dr. Mira and Dr. Clark, and I'm sorry that I missed the soiree the other night. I hear it was, it was something to speak about. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers who responded to my calendar inquiry. I'm going to touch a little bit on that when we get to the agenda item. So I appreciate all of the comments that were sent to me to opine on the calendar. It was very nice to get our instructional professionals' opinion on the subject. So I'll be sharing some of those results with y'all when we get to the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate all our graduates, as well as their families, on the graduation we had last weekend. It was wonderful, the weather was nice, and I had a trading places experience with Mrs. Hazard. It's my first time I wasn't in Mountain View. I missed it, but I have to say that Colonial Forge was so gracious, and, you know, it was a wonderful experience to be there as well, and to experience a whole different climate in our schools, which reminds me of how our schools are like our children. They're all ours, and we love them all, and they're all a little bit different, and there's something special about everyone. So thank you to the Forge community for making me feel welcome. And Mr. Fulmer joined me on the stage, and it was great, and I was so glad it didn't rain. It looked like it, it was threatening. But I will be back at Mountain View next year, and Mrs. Hazard and I are planning to go together. Also, wanted to congratulate Dr. Clark and Dr. Mira. I see they've already gone, probably starting early, on their retirement plans. But they have done so much for this school district. I've known them forever. Remember when Dr. Mira came here? I mean, he's been through a lot with us, under the gun, under the spotlight, and he's kept us in a place. And when we saw that technology committee, there was a whole lot more red here before with those computers, and I attribute a lot of that to Dr. Mira and his advocacy for the technology and the advancement in Stafford County Public Schools. So I think we owe a lot to him. And of course, Dr. Clark has done an amazing job with Special Ed. I mean, it's always a challenge to meet the needs of our families and our community, and I think her heart is there, and she has done everything that she possibly could. And I think she has led us in a good direction and has us on a good track. So I will miss both of them, but I very much appreciate their new start and moving forward, and I'm a little jealous of that retirement part. But thank you to both of them for everything they've done for Stafford County Public Schools, and they are certainly big shoes to fill. And I know we have, you know, we have great people appointed for those jobs, and, you know, they've got a good legacy to follow. Thank you.
I know a couple of these awards come a little bit late, but they're late, and we may have these folks in front of us in a couple of weeks, but I've been asked to make sure I give them a shout-out. This is for the USA Skills National Competition. We had a couple of students from Stafford High School, three students from Stafford High School that participated in the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. A.J. Schalk and Brandon Clayberg both took second place in additive manufacturing, and Jennifer Sproul got a gold medal in architectural drafting. So congratulations to them. I look forward to them coming in front of us if we are able to get them here during the summer. I want to give my congratulations to the class of 2017 and Principal Lewis and his staff did a fantastic job at the Stafford High School graduation ceremony. Again, done without a glitch. We avoided the rain down there as well. And it was, it ran like clockwork. It was fantastic how he ran it this year, as he always does. And Ms. McCosker, congratulations to you and to your son Sean, who is among the graduates at Stafford High School. Job well done. I was able to attend the Teaching and Learning Summit the first day of it. This is where we are sending a third of our teaching staff for a week-long or four days of professional development. I was able to attend yesterday morning, opening ceremony with Ms. Hazard, and then I actually had the opportunity to stay all day. Absolute incredible experience. Everyone of the participants, every one of the teachers that's there, the feedback that I received from them, I asked a couple of them to try to get some candid feedback, and everybody was absolutely glowing about the experience and the opportunity that was provided there. So I'm very happy that that has been very successful. This guy, who I really hadn't heard much of outside of Dr. Benson and maybe Ms. Cale, and a couple of, Dr. started talking to this guy, John Antinetti, a little bit. But he was there presenting, I think he's there all week, and wow, absolutely incredible speaker, not being a education professional, really being able to see, you know, their application of methodology and how we deliver content and the changes that he is going to create with us here in Stafford County Public Schools as we adopt this C5W work that we're doing and the curriculum changes. Just great job, great job by the staff who put the event on as professional, of a professional development event summit that I've ever seen. And I've been to some big ones, and you guys really did an incredibly outstanding job. Dr. Benson, I hope, just the folks that designed it and put on all the logistics and made it happen this week, really get a hearty slap on the back, or pat on the back for their work. Pat on the back for their work. I really can't speak highly enough of how incredibly professional this, the whole presentation has been. To the folks in the Technology Department, the IRTs, incredible job TRTs doing the work, educating these folks on using the new Google Suite and Google Apps for education. Just a great job of getting them to adapt and adopt the technology. And from what I see from this summit is, Google, the rollout of Google is going to continue to be successful for us, and our collaboration amongst our teaching staff is just going to skyrocket through that app, or through Google use. I'm sorry, I'm going on way too long, but it was absolutely incredible experience. If any of you have the opportunity, a few minutes to get by Stafford High School over the next three days, take the time, or two days, take the time and do it. It really is an amazing thing they put together, and I thank Dr. Benson and all the folks that have been involved in that. Great job. And one last real quick shout-out I want to give is to somebody who's very familiar with Stafford County Public Schools, Lieutenant Deonte, is that how you say his name? Deonte Diggs, who is, his episode of America's Got Talent is being televised today, it might be on right now. You might be missing him. You know, he not only is representing Stafford County and Stafford County Sheriff's Office, but he has been involved with Stafford County Public Schools so long as a resource officer and leading the resource officers and leading the unit that has the resource officers in it now. He is a representative of Stafford County Public Schools just as much as he is of any of the other organizations in Stafford County. We most certainly appreciate his service, and we appreciate his promotion of the schools within the national attention he has received. And good luck to him.
Yeah. Mr. Carter?
Just real quickly, I would like to just once again say, Dr. Benson, thank you for sticking around with us. And yeah, just in my short time on the board, it's been a pleasure working with you. I have children in the system. My wife and I have seen the improvement in the school system under your leadership, so thank you.
Ms. Decatur?
Somebody didn't want me to talk today. I'm just going to echo the sentiments and say congratulations to the class of 2017, specifically North Stafford, the greatest high school on the universe, in the universe. Something particular, I had the pleasure of spending the day with Pam and Scott, and that was just really nice to be there. Those children are phenomenal, and I just left feeling just really good, you know, just a really positive experience. Particularly when they went across the stage and got their diploma. They would stand there and wait, and the next one would come and change over. And I don't know if that's customary, I've never seen it done before, but I just thought, you know, what a sense of community that school really had, because it's not like they were switching over their best friends, you know, they're sitting in alphabetical order, and they may never have even spoke to this kid in high school, but they, you know, and it was, you know, they went on and off into the sunset with their life, so. It was magical, it was moving, and I was very, very impressed to be back there for my first North Stafford graduation after 13 years. So, yeah, it was really nice. So congratulations to them.
Well, I graduated four years ago from...
From where?
All right, it's my time, back away. No, thanks a lot. Congratulations to all the students graduated, you know, it's just what an honor for me to be on the stage and give, not only sign the diploma, Madam Chair and Dr. Benson, but give the diploma to my son. And next year, I guess, Madam Chair, you'll be giving a diploma away to your daughter, and so will I, I have a daughter coming up. Congrats to the staff for another busy year, tough year. Worked hard. Lot of, you know, people don't realize that, you know, working on the school staff is probably not the least strenuous job you can have. You know, you have a lot of, you know, a lot of folks giving you calls about different things every day, and you work late hours, and so, what a wonderful time this is where we reflect back on that year, when these kids walk across the stage, and those four years at that school. So just thank you so much for not only the senior staff's work, but the work at the school division to get these kids across the stage and safe and moving on to their next piece in life. Yeah, I missed last week's retirement ceremony of Dr. Mira and Dr. Clark. I was at Goshen Scout Reservation for, I think, the fourth time. I was sweating to the oldies in the woods, living out of a tent, and so, you know, everyone said, "Well, you're away from work, Dwayne, you know, you're in the field, if you will, living in a tent." But with, when you're with little guys, little 10-year-olds, nine-year-olds, what do you hear, you know, 1 o'clock, you know, you're just getting to sleep at 1:00 or 12:00, you hear, "Spider, spider." And then the next thing is, "Mom, mom," you know, missing, so all, you know, I didn't get much sleep. But anyway, I'm sorry I missed, I'm glad I was there, but I'm sorry I missed their retirement ceremony. And congratulations, Dr. Benson, for resigning. And then, of course, signing that new con... Wait for it, wait for it, and then signing the new contract for four years. It kind of shows that, you know, you have a vested interest in Stafford County, and for four years, another four years, and hopefully we'll have you for another four years after that. But, you know, thanks for doing that.
Well, I'll close out public comments. Again, it's, graduation is such an exciting time for our graduates. It's great to say that that's the class of 17. As I said to my daughter, I said, "Well, as soon as their tassel moves over, then they are graduates, and now you are a senior." And I think that's what's so interesting about our school system. We are on a cycle, we circle. I did not know about the tradition from North Stafford, but I think that's what's so great about our school system. We have such a great tradition here, but we are building on it. And as we have Jamie up here as a graduate of Stafford County Public Schools, I mean, it's just such an exciting place to be. And I attribute that to great leadership and great classrooms. I've had the privilege throughout the year to visit different classrooms, and it's so amazing. And I think that's why yesterday, when I attended the Teaching and Learning Summit and could feel the excitement, I don't know how excited people were, I got up there to speak, which always gives me sort of crazy thoughts. But what I did say as part of that, and what I challenged those that were there, and I challenge all of us, we have to be thinkers, because we spend so much time doing. challenge all of us, we have to be thinkers, because we spend so much time doing. I know I do, I write, you know, you call, sometimes you clean, sometimes you get the groceries, all those things. But at the end of the, when do we sit and think about the future and just think about how we're going to react? And so, my comments to them, and I think our challenge for those of us who have that summer, that we hopefully get a little bit of downtime, is to think, because what we want to do with, when we are thinkers, we want to produce thinkers. And that's what we want to produce in our students, because the world out there, I am not the technology person, I didn't get half of what was going on there, but all of us need to be able to think, no matter where we go, and to deliberate. And that's why the C-5W work and what Dr. Benson has brought in terms of leadership and our strategic plan is all about helping our students become thinkers, and we have to role model that as well. And so, it's been a wonderful year, it's always ups and downs, but I think at the end of the year, when we do get to watch those, I guess it was almost 2,000, almost 2,200 walk across the stage, it's so, it does make you say, "Wow, the world is good." And I think it's neat that there's a whole nother group coming in that are going to take their place. Mr. McCosker and I get to be parents of those, I hope to be sitting there with a tassel in a year from now. But it's so much excitement going on, and Stafford County is a family, and we keep looking out for each other, and we keep moving forward. So, for those of you who get that summer break, be thinkers, so we can come back in September and produce more thinkers. Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, no comments this evening.
All right, ready to move on.
All right, well, then we next have consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
Second.
It's been motion to approve consent, any removals or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, Dr. Benson, did you have a comment here? I'm sorry, I was told. Not after consent?
After consent.
See, you did have something to say.
I paid attention to our clerk.
Yeah.
But, no, it's my pleasure, on the consent agenda, personnel agenda, I just want to recognize that we, as a point of, part of the board's action, that we have appointed Ms. Cassie Mallory to be Assistant Principal at Brookpoint High School. She's not able to be with us this evening, but she has been an Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities at Stafford High School since July 2014. Prior to her appointment at Stafford High School, she was Principal Intern and Health and PE Department Chair at Mountain View. Ms. Mallory also taught Special Education at the middle school level in Prince William County.
Thank you, and congratulations to Ms. Mallory.
And I think Mr. McCosker would join me in saying, we will miss her, or the Stafford High School community will miss her down at.
Yes, she, I know Mr. Hiren spoke very highly of Cassie, and so will I, you know, she, she really, over the last few years, is such a hard worker for Stafford High School. And we're going to miss her, so I totally agree. Good luck to her.
It's our circle thing, you heard all the places she'd been, so, you know, it's going with my circle comments. All right, moving on to action items, we have 12.01, do I have a motion regarding the Autumn Ridge subdivision? Non-transportation zone, non-transportation.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.01.
Is there a second, at least for discussion? Okay, been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Ms. Chairman, just quickly, this is one of the schools in my district, and, you know, I, there were some, there were some parents that expressed some concern, and the staff, I think, did a nice job addressing those concerns. They asked for more time at a meeting, the staff gave them more time to have another meeting. A few more parents showed up, but it wasn't, you know, it certainly wasn't, as we saw from redistricting, as I was talking to Celia a little earlier, people do hear. And so, you know, I think the staff did a nice job addressing some concerns. Just one thing I just ask, that the staff do keep a lookout on, you know, with the completion of the Embry Mill Road, as well as a widen of 630, if we could just be cognizant of that, and just make sure that the traffic flow isn't more than we had anticipated, that's something we just want to keep, obviously keep a lookout on. But outside of that, I mean, I support this.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.02, this is regarding the rebuild, the funding strategy regarding the rebuild of Moncur Elementary School. Is there a motion, or?
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion, but I'm going to be very specific about my motion.
Okay.
I move to approve 12.02 with the proposed funding strategy as laid out by Mr. Hiran. Further, I further move that if the Board of Supervisors approves the BOS resolution, which is R-17-195, without edits, the school board authorizes staff to adjust funding strategy to meet the strategy laid out in said resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, I believe we will probably have discussion as the motion maker, Ms. Egan, you may go first.
Indeed. So, I'm going to revert back a little bit to the, to the meeting we had last night on the three-on-three. I guess I approached the meeting going in thinking I was being a good steward to our local funding body by going in and sharing information with them. What I, what we received was a little bit different than what I anticipated when I began the meeting. There was a little bit of, well, the meeting kind of went sideways, pretty quickly. Ms. Sellers had some, had some points that she, she made very well-known to us, those of us who were there, heard them all. Some of them were a little bit not accurate, some of them were not fair. I will start off with talking about, you know, the funding strategy that we have was laid out by, not only by our staff, but the Board of Supervisors apparently had already heard about it, and were receptive to it. Clearly, there's a, there's a resolution addressing it. Other things came up during the conversation, you know, about these proffer dollars and our other areas that we're going to be utilizing money from, where she had made the suggestion that we were taking things away from other projects, which was completely not true. Mr. Hiran, I asked Mr. Hiran, things, you know, HVAC systems at Hampton Oaks, well, Ms. Sellers heard that we just didn't bother funding it, and it just went for a long time without being repaired. That turned out to be not accurate. Many other bullet points that I'm going to just go very quickly on, because I, there's something else that I need to read, and that's going to take just a few minutes. We were informed that Garrisonville parents are not contacting the school board about...
Garrisonville Voting District.
Right, the Garrisonville Voting District, not Garrisonville Elementary. Parents are not contacting the school board, that they're contacting the Board of Supervisors to address things that are school-related. Mr. Connolly is the Garrisonville representative, and if we've got anybody in the Garrisonville District that's watching right now, I would highly encourage you to not pick up the phone and call the Board of Supervisors. The schools are not in their purview, except for being the, the local funding body, end of story. Mr. Connolly is very capable, we appointed him based on the criteria that we had set out, and he's very capable of representing you. So, it would behoove you to speak with him before picking up the phone and calling the Board of Supervisors, who don't have any jurisdiction over the operations of the schools, or the school buses, or the teachers, or anything else. So, I wanted to make that point very clear. We were also criticized about not being transparent in the conversations that we've been having about the Moncur rebuild, and that's clearly not true. We've had work sessions, we've talked openly for the past two years now about Moncur, right on this dais. And if it's not been on this dais, it's been in the work session, and if it's not at the work session, it's at the three-on-three meeting with the supervisors. So, we've, we've had ample transparency, we've got minutes, we've got work session minutes, we've, you know, we've been very transparent, but I'm going to go a step further, right after my next bullet point. We've been criticized and questioned about how this all fits into redistricting and other things. And when I say the conversation went sideways, it literally went sideways. I mean, we were touching on things that we thought we were going in there to say, "Hey, we've, we've got a challenge with funding, we've, we've got a great solution to it," and it turned into accusations, and us being accused of game-playing and, and making a mockery of transparency and things like that. So, what I'm going to do here is, if I can find it, I'm not going to hit on every point going back to 2014, but as far as what's happened recently, given the fact that we've been accused of not being transparent in this conversation, I'll go back as far as December 2016. The Division pre-qualified 11 contractors to the, for the rebuild of the Moncur Elementary School project. In 2017, in March of 2017, staff advertised the project through the Stafford County Purchasing Department, which is through the county government. A pre-bid meeting occurred on March 31st, 2017. Project plans and specifications were provided to interested parties through the Stafford County website. Six general contractors attended the pre-bid conference. Bids were opened on May 2nd, 2017. Four bidders provided full-scope bids. Sorenson Company is the apparent low bidder with a base bid price of $29 million. Staff has reviewed the bid, and the bid appears to be responsive and responsible. The base bid exceeds the current construction budget, 29, 734, to 27, 2, by $2,535, or 34. Staff initiated a comprehensive value engineering with the Sorenson Gross Company and the architect in an effort to reduce the base bid by a targeted 1.5 million. The value engineering list with cost was reviewed and prioritized by staff, including representatives from Moncur Elementary School and the Instruction Department. On June 13th, 2017, a school board work session was held to review the value engineering list and determine what VE, value engineering, items to cut from the project scope. Staff was presented a funding strategy for the school board, staff also presented a funding strategy for the school board to consider, addressing additional 1 million in funding for the project. Due to the delay in awarding the contract, the planned mid-year opening, January 2019, will be changed to September 2019 for the opening. My preference, anyway, because the mid-year seemed a little bit chaotic to me. Anyhow, on June 20th, 2017, a school board work session was held to finalize the value engineering list and select a funding strategy. The final proposed value engineering list was included in the agenda as an attachment. This is what was provided to the supervisors last night at our three-on-three meeting. The final proposed funding strategy includes the following source of funding with these following amounts. Proffer funds, proffers are what are given to local communities for the impact that the development will have on that community. So, we were, we're looking at 593,000 in proffer funds. Capital reserves were 319,000. Capital reserves are money that we had in reserves for projects such as the Moncur rebuild. Fiscal year 17 carryover, that's operational savings, that's, you know, we're not taking anything away from anybody, so that's, that's a million dollars right there. So, between that and what we've saved in the value engineering would cover this particular overage that we were experiencing. So, the reason I'm getting into all this, as I stated, we've been accused of not being transparent, I gave you a little bit of transparency, I gave you some, some of the funding numbers. These work, we're not taking money away from, from, we're not asking the Board of Supervisors to stroke us a check, we're not. We're using monies that already exist. Getting back to the, we were told we needed to bring a redistricting plan to the Board of Supervisors. I don't see how that's in their purview either. And I'm not, this is, and let me rephrase this, I'm not, this is not to all of the supervisors, we were missing, there were two members there last night, there was one member that was kind of setting things sideways. Ms. Mauer was, was not part of that conversation, she was very supportive in, in what we had brought to her. So, the one last comment I'm going to make before I read the resolution, that I'm going to ask this board to support tonight, are numbers, capacity numbers. And I'm only going to touch on the ones that affect the 610 corridor, which also affects Moncur, Winding Creek Elementary School, Park Ridge, Hampton Oaks. If we don't get the school built, if we don't get Moncur on track, we can't do a redistricting. We need a redistricting. We've talked about this before, and I'm going to tell you why. We've got Moncur Elementary School here, the design capacity, now that's design capacity, I'm not talking about program, we've already had this conversation 100 times. This is how many students we can fit in classrooms in the school, doesn't count pre-K, doesn't count for special education, or any of the other things that are mandated upon us, okay? As of the 12th of June, at a capacity of 754, we're at 775 students. That's a negative 21 seats, that's if we use every single classroom. So, that's number one. We have another one here, Stafford Elementary School, we've got 62 seats left. Has anybody seen what's going on around Brookpoint, Stafford Middle School, Stafford L? Yeah, new developments. So, we've got 62 seats before that school is at 100%. And again, we're talking about building capacity, not program capacity. So, I'm not going to go into all of the numbers, yes, there are issues at Winding Creek, but I will tell you that Winding Creek, just recently, was, was put on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors, am I right? Wasn't there a project, a development project?
A subdivision, yeah.
A subdivision, for 92 homes or something like that? One of the things Ms. Sellers had said last night was, you know, her parents are complaining because the proffer money that would go to the Garrisonville District would be going to Moncur, which is part of your district and mine. How is she going to justify that? Well, how do you justify approving another new community right next to the school that's just about at capacity? So, those are just little points that I wanted to put out there. Having said that, I'm going to read the last thing here, which is the, the actual resolution that I would like this board to support tonight, which is the funding mechanism that is going to finally get this train in motion. A resolution authorizing the county administrator to budget and appropriate proffer funds for the Anne Moncur Elementary School rebuild, whereas the construction bids for Anne Moncur Elementary School rebuild exceed the available project budget, and whereas schools category proffer funds from the Embry Mill and Westgate Developments in the amount of $535,000 are available. And whereas, although the Embry Mill and Westgate Developments are outside of the Anne Moncur Elementary School attendance zone, the board believes that the impacts and mitigation of those impacts are collective, and capacity added at Moncur Elementary School will likewise make capacity more available at other schools, in addition to the redistricting. Whereas, schools category proffer funds are available from the Town Center at Acquahia Development in the amount of $323,000, which is in the Moncur Elementary School attendance zone. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 5th day of July, which is going to be next week, that the county administrator be, and he hereby is authorized to budget and appropriate $859,000 from the school's proffer fund as follows, to the school's construction fund for the Anne Moncur Elementary School rebuild project. That was the 323 from the Town Center at Acquahia, Embry Mill is 283, and Westgate is 251, for a total of 859, 306. So, having said that, I would appreciate you guys supporting this and sending this over as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Decatur, do you have any comment? That's the second you get, next tip.
Thank you. Well, I actually excused myself from that meeting last night a little bit early, because it was non-productive. I felt that it was accusatory, and my time was better served putting my son to bed and reading bedtime stories, so that's what I went and did. I did speak with several of the members, not speak with, let me be clear, I emailed with several of the members of the committee today, just to make sure that everyone was clear, to let them know if they had any questions that they would like answered in a truthful fashion, with reasonable information, that I was available, and willing to do so before it went up to, for their board to vote on, because I do feel that there was some... it went up to, for their board to vote on. Because I do feel that there was some just false information being spread, as you said at the meeting last night, that could affect the way that their board would vote if it were to be spread and if they were to believe it, which would be just disappointing. I'd like to reiterate that we, the three-on-three committee was created in order to increase communication between the boards, to help develop our relationship, help us work together better, and that's what we felt that we were doing before we came as a board tonight to vote on something that they would ultimately have to help us out with. You know, it would be a nice thing, a professional thing for us to do, to sit down with them first and let them know what our plan was. So, that was the intent. And as Ms. Egan said, it did go relatively sideways and just, kind of just confusing in general, which is why I didn't stay. I would also just like to say, yeah, again, we didn't go in there asking for any more money. And I would just like to say that there were comments made by Ms. Sellers that she would only support our plan if we could give her, assure her, thank you, that certain neighborhoods of her choosing would go to certain schools, which I found odd. And I just figured I'd mention that. I haven't been here long enough to know whether or not that's appropriate, but I didn't feel that it was at the time. So, that's all I have to add about that. Sound about right?
Sure. All right. Any other comments?
Sure.
Mr. Hirons.
I do want to make sure we're clear. Number one, the action we're taking tonight as far as Ms. Egan's motion, which I fully support, is to go forward with the funding strategy that we have already laid out. That does not include any additional ask or anything along those lines, and it will get dirt turning on the Moncur site. It will get us on schedule, as I understand, from Mr. Horan to be able to have the project scheduled to be able to open that school fall of 2018, correct?
19.
19, 2019. Sit down. 2019.
Yes, sir. The particular agenda item, you can go forward with it, and we certainly are in the position to award the contract with the available funds that we have.
Yeah. I just had the date wrong. 2019.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Which is important. And, you know, as Ms. Egan articulated, it's important we get this school going and built and opened on time. Any further delay is only going to cause students to remain in crowded classrooms, crowded school, and students to remain in the current Moncur, which is a place that even the Board of Supervisors has said they don't want a school. They are the ones who initiated rebuilding that school or moving that school because it's right on one of the busiest roads in Stafford County, probably one of the busiest roads in the Arapahannock region. And it's in a, what has become now a very commercial space. So, delaying it just is not going to make any sense. So, the second part of Ms. Egan's motion was our support of our Resolution R17-195 of the Board of Supervisors, which Ms. Sellers brought forward to the board. And it was on their, essentially what is their information items. I think they call it new business. At their last meeting will be on their old business. At their upcoming meeting will be actionable. I have some words from members of the Board of Supervisors that said, yeah, they'll support that. So, I suspect it will come up on their agenda, and they will either vote it up or down. And what R17-195 does is consolidate some profers that are beyond the Garrisonville, beyond the Moncur attendance zone, beyond, is that Wildwater Election District, and gives us more proffer funds to put to that project since it does save us some cash and saves our capital reserves, which is, puts us in a better, slightly better financial position. Doesn't do wonders for us, but does help us a little. And so, I'm encouraged that they want to take that action. And speaking of profers specifically, and this is something I carry on from my time on the Planning Commission, I always had concern about how elected officials view profers. And the State General Assembly kind of gave the smackdown to elected officials and potential abuse or what they viewed as abuse of profers. When I was on Planning Commission, we had a couple of projects come before us that I thought, wow, that really does not make sense. We had members of the Board of Supervisors really directing developers on how profers, in particular, school profers, would be spent without any consent of the school board or even much input from the school division. And, you know, they directed things to buy computers and iPads, things that were going to be, and turf fields, that were going to be obsolete prior to the full development even being built. Fortunately, we were able to stop some of that during the discussion at the Planning Commission level before those moved forward. But they still provide guidance to Mr. Horan and his staff on profers that they need to be spent within the attendance zone and often described as the election district from which the projects come from. You know, the concern with that from an elected official position is, well, you suddenly, as an elected official representing a district, you have these proffer funds that you can dole out for, you know, what could be perceived as favors. Not a good situation being. I do encourage the supervisors to, and there is some movement on this, to take a look at their proffer guidelines and how they're expended, and expand the ability, in particular, you know, my concern right now is the school division, to be able to have fewer restrictions on how we can utilize those funds from a geographical perspective. We absolutely, I actually very strongly support the state mandate that they have to be spent on growth mitigation. And when we're spending money on growth mitigation, sometimes it doesn't mean putting them to a school that is in the attendance zone of that, of the district from where, next to the project. It might be rebuilding a school elsewhere that we can then redistrict and move some kids out and provide some mitigation to that school that's overcrowded and is going to be overcrowded from 97 additional homes. So, I encourage the Board of Supervisors to look at their proffer guidelines and help us help them with being able to make better use out of proffer funds to really have an impact on growth. And I fully support Ms. Egan's motion, and I fully support getting us moving so that we can get this, get shovels in the ground and start moving dirt there and get that school built. Again, what we'll do tonight, our motion will enable, put that in motion, and then if the Board of Supervisors does take action on their Resolution R17-195 and they adopt it, we authorize Mr. Horan and his staff to adjust, or and Mr. Fulmer, I guess, will be involved in that as well, to adjust the funding to what is spelled out in that resolution.
Ms. Healy.
I just want to echo Ms. Egan's reports on the, and Ms. Decatur's as well, reports on the meeting last week, last week, seems like a week. It was only last night. But there was a highlight, and that was the Rock Hill representative on the Board of Supervisors, Wendy Mauer. She was, she was very positive. She was very encouraging. In fact, she pointed out that this would be an opportunity to properly use the proffer funds, and actually noted that if the proffer funds are not used within a certain period of time, she said 10 years, then they would go back to the state. So, you know, she had, she had positive comments. She was trying to make this work. She recognizes the need, you know, for Moncur to go forward. And I think she also recognized the point that we're not in this position because of something we did. As Mr. Horan pointed out yesterday, the market controls the contract bids. It's not something we have any control on. And in fact, after we got the bid, we acted in good faith and reduced the amount by value engineering, saving the instructional integrity and the need to have the capacity for the school. So, I think the school district and staff, as well Dr. Benson, deserve some credit here for making the best of a unfortunate situation where these bids came in high. I mean, we've recognized for years that Moncur is a priority. It should have been built a while ago. Would have been cheaper? Probably yes. If we have to wait to build it, it will only cost more. The price is not going to go down. So, you know, I think we are acting prudently. We need to move forward with this. The irony is that the questions that Mrs. Sellers, you know, raised, and every one of us tried to answer, she kept asking, well, what are you cutting? And we said, we're not cutting anything. You know, we want to use this proffer money, which has not been earmarked. There is nothing being cut. But the irony is, if we don't have this money available, we will have to cut something because it will have to come out of, you know, an operational budget. So, this to me is a win-win situation. I appreciate Ms. Mauer's position, and I would encourage each member of this board. I know, you know, some of you already have when you had free time between last night and today to contact your colleagues on the Board of Supervisors and see if they have any questions. Explain to them, you know, what the point is here. And try to perhaps give some feedback that is positive other than the negative that we felt yesterday. I mean, it was ironic because I think if all the members of the three-on-three had been there, I don't think it would have been the same, you know, position. In fact, Ms. Mauer didn't even know she was going to serve as an alternate until, you know, the other ones weren't there. And that was another unfortunate communication because we learned today that the other two members had previous engagements, and that's why they wanted to cancel the meeting. But we thought they just didn't think they had anything on the agenda, and we thought this is important to talk about. But, you know, that's something else. But I don't think, I don't think that this is a harbinger of future communications. I think we have a good relationship. We need to continue it to work with our supervisors. And the only thing we can do is to try to keep explaining, but I mean, there were three of us saying the same thing last night, and that didn't get through. So, perhaps Dr. Benson can work his magic when he makes his appearances as well on Tuesday. But I support this resolution wholeheartedly. I think, I've not been one of these big supporters who spend all this money on Moncur, so it's ironic that I want to go forward. But we are committed. I mean, we are committed. We have to move. We owe it to the community. And my gosh, when this is done, Moncur land goes back to the county. What do you think they're going to do with it? Da, sell it for a lot of money. So, the money, the land that they're getting back from Moncur is worth a whole lot more than the land that they bought for us, you know, across the, across the way. So, you know, let's move forward, and we can all come out ahead on this. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
I will make mine. I too will be supporting the motion on the table. I do want to give, as Mr. Hirons and I have spent lots of times in profers for many years going through them, what my comments are going to be tonight. The reason I am supporting the funding strategy as laid out by our county staff, this is a funding strategy that meets the current proffer guidance that we have been given for many years from our Board of Supervisors. It needs to be within the attendance zone and to be a capacity-enhancing project. Should the Board of Supervisors choose to broaden that and to change that particular strategy, I am certainly in favor of that. But tonight, the reason I definitely want to support this one is because this type of strategy tonight is one that will get us there to be able to say, please start work on this, on this building. Well, really, where they start is the site work. When do we want to be doing it? As soon as possible before, hopefully there won't be snow like next, like last year. But I wanted to state one thing about profers going forward. The reason that we have in our funding strategy to use money from Westgate and from Shelton Woods to fund Colonial Forge additions and Mountain View additions, I can see some people saying, well, why does that make sense? Here's why that makes sense, is when profers are given, they say, you will get that money when you get the occupancy permit or the building permit. Well, by the time the occupancy or the building permit is issued, you will probably have students within three weeks for a couple months. They will be attending that school. If we are trying to use those monies to be able to accommodate that student, it's too late. So, when we go back and we say, wow, we are building something already, yes, we are partway through and almost done with Mountain View and Colonial Forge. But using those for the Westgate students that attend Colonial Forge, I think that makes perfect sense because guess what? They have a place to go, and now they have space to go there. Shelton Woods, same thing. They will be attending Mountain View High School, ready to accommodate them in, hopefully, our brand-new spaces come the fall. So, I just wanted to say, to explain why that is in there, is because it's a timing issue for us for profers. We get the profers, and we get them when they build it, not when we need to be planning for that student that is coming. Because by the time the student comes, we're crowded if we aren't already ahead of the game in building. So, therefore, I would suggest, and I will be raising, at least with my particular Board of Supervisor, that the Shelton Woods portion, that is in our particular resolution, be also included in theirs because I think that makes perfect sense. And then, wow, we are at $980,000 with proffer funds. Like I said, I'm not going to modify the motion, but I will be raising that with my supervisor of saying, why not use that money as well and to include what they have in the current resolution? Because we want to make space for the kids as soon as we can. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our next one, sorry, 12.03, approve the 2018-19 school calendar. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, can I clarify? That is a post-Labor Day calendar.
Okay. So, state again for, sorry.
Motion to approve, and it is a post-Labor Day start on the calendar.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Healy first.
I've already talked about this.
I've talked about this many meetings. If I need to talk anymore, I can, but it's going to be a late night, so.
All right. Ms. McCosker?
I too, Madam Chair. I am reserving comment.
Okay. Ms. Egan.
Thank you. I warned y'all. Again, I wanted to thank all of the responses that I received. And initially, I was going to read all of them, but I'm going to read the ones that I think are most pertinent. I was also going to offer up a substitute motion, but given the fact that, you know, there was some argument about being able to plan for it. So, while I'm going to throw out some positions by our teachers and why they would prefer to have a pre-Labor Day start, I'm not going to push the issue for next year because the time is getting tight. But I'm certainly going to be pushing it for the following year. So, I'm hoping I can get some support on this. We have, there were so many things that we wanted to do for our teachers this year, and we couldn't. I at least wanted to hear what they had to say and what their positions were on starting beforehand. And I want to give them that. If I can give them anything, I want them to know that they have been heard, and I appreciate, you know, what they've, the time they took to kind of get back to me with all of these things. I would say that most of the benefits are going to come to the, to the high school group, maybe middle school, maybe high school group over the elementary school. I think that the survey, yes, was it flawed? Absolutely. We've already determined that. It was discussed. We got rid of it. It's never to see its face again gladly. But I still think that, you know, out of the 35,000 surveys that went out, we only received 5,000 back. That is not a true, that is not a true vision of, you know, or a picture of what our parents want. It did go out at a bad time. It went out during, you know, prom time, and everybody's getting ready for graduation. High school's a for graduation. High school's a crazy time. You've got all these things going on. Elementary school, I remember, I was an elementary parent. You've got more time on your hands to be responding to surveys. High school parents, not so much, especially the ones that are in, you know, IB, and they've got to do all these other, you know, extra things to move on. So, anyway, some of the things that were talked about, and we've all heard this one before, the finish, the first semester before the winter break. Currently, students who move over winter break do not get any credits for the first semester. This will allow them to ease or to earn their credits. By finishing fall semester before winter break, less time will be wasted in review after students return in January from the long winter break, particularly in SOL courses. Moving this school year to start in August will be beneficial for giving a clean break at the end of December. I think it's best to have a fresh start when students return to school in January for a new semester. It mirrors what they can expect at the collegiate level if they decide to go to college. SOLs would be completed without the interruption of snow days. Most snow days occur in January and February. There would be no interruption of instruction for two weeks prior to the fall SOLs in January, as there is now with the current winter break. As far as AB, or I'm sorry, AP, IB, and/or SOL, it allows IB high schools to meet SL subject 150-hour instruction before May exam, which is the minimum requirement more readily within a one-year course. Allows students to get more instruction prior to AP and IB exams. The academic benefits for AP and IB students cannot be stressed enough. Heard that from many of my parents. Additional time prior to the end, less downtime after the exam, improved performance on midterms, and continuity with subject matter after the winter break. Additional IB assessments are time-sensitive. Beyond just the end-of-the-year exams, for example, IB English has written tasks that are due in March. Internal assessments are due in April. This would maximize instruction prior to the writing SOL in October and March for the semester classes. Better for August. Between 1/4 and 1/3 of high school students are in band or fall sports, depending on the school. These students are back at the beginning of August anyhow, so their summer is extremely short. This would allow them to have a longer summer break. Better for June. Senior students going into the military who have appointments over, often need to start their programs or basic training at the beginning of June before they are even done with their high school. This aligns with typical collegiate schedules so that students can take advantage of summer programs offered through these post-secondary affiliations. And in the recent past, some of these programs included government-affiliated institutions such as the military and NESA. And the final thought on the pros was, like it or not, the kids are done after Memorial Day. Let's face it, we've heard many parents say, "Why are they watching movies? Why are they doing that?" Some teachers are, some teachers aren't, but it is happening. Days in class in June are not just, are just not productive for instructional time. We can't cajole the kids into paying attention after Memorial Day. So, the cons are pretty much what was said earlier by speakers and whatnot. So, and thank you for indulging me on this. I just, again, our teachers deserve to be heard, and this is, this was their contribution to the discussion, and I'm glad, I'm glad I did it, and I'm glad they, we had an opportunity to hear some of the things that they had said. I will be bringing this back again next year when we have the same conversation. So, thank you.
Yes.
Real quickly, thank you for all of that information. It's like the Jamie and Irene Show tonight, maybe? I just wanted to make one really quick point in regards to this conversation. I, too, I think, I think we've hashed it. I think we've discussed it a lot. But I know that this board has kind of maybe been accused in the past of not taking committee recommendations. So, I just want to make it very public knowledge that the Calendar Committee presented us with information and did remain neutral. They did not give us any recommendation. So, I just want to make it very clear that this board sitting right here did not, not take any recommendation from the Calendar Committee. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have two points. One is, I just want clarification of the motion. The motion is to adopt the Option B post-Labor Day calendar that was within our agenda item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I suppose I do have a question, so I'm going to say three points. Ms. Nichols, you may have to respond to this. And my question here is, how much scrutiny was given to the development of this post-Labor Day calendar for 2018-2019 calendar? What my fear is, we're kind of moving on this one somewhat quickly, and it was a copy and paste, and on all of our releases, you know, I've taken a look. It looks like the holidays are where we typically want them. Veterans Day is recognized on the day that will be the federal holiday of November 12th. But I don't want us coming into 2018-2019 school year and say, "You know what? Back when we adopted this calendar, we forgot about this." How much scrutiny was given to the development of this?
We developed that calendar based on what has been developed in the past as far as following traditional models. The only difference in the calendar that was presented with you and Option B is that spring break was moved from the week after Easter to the week before Easter, allowing to have a teacher workday on the 22nd of that year, which would be the day after the Easter holiday. And that allowed us to keep the 21st of December as a half-day prior to the winter break.
Okay. Just kind of that response kind of tells me there was thought put into this, and there was scrutiny. So, thank you. Thanks for that. So, kind of my third point is, we got to this point tonight in having to adopt this as-is because it was a broken process. I don't really blame anybody for that. It just, it got going. School staff was very busy at that time, and trying to develop this calendar and have the committee, and it just didn't work out. The process just didn't work out. And what Ms. Egan brings forward, absolutely, our teachers need to be heard from, our parents need to be heard from, our community needs to be heard from. And what I would expect in a process, like I spoke to quite a bit last time we talked about this, was the information, the data to support these changes. And what I would, my expectation is, somebody, when folks are making assertions about the benefits of having more time before AP exams, IP, IB study, et cetera, yeah, on its surface, yeah, it seems to make a heck of a lot of sense. But I would like to see the data behind that, and I would expect that to all be developed within the process and with the committee analyzing that data and that information, and then bringing us a recommendation, which Ms. Decatur is correct, you know, the committee, and really because the committee process sort of broke down right there at the end, they didn't have a real opportunity to bring us a true recommendation. So, you know, I support and appreciate the folks that step up and serve on our committees as much as anyone. I do want to value the work that they do and appreciate the work that they do. But if they are volunteering and working on something, and the process itself, the underlying process is broken, you know, we are wasting their time. It's not them wasting their time. We are wasting their time. So, we want to make sure that the process is good. And part of our motion last time was to say that this school board is going to work on the process. We're going to work on it, I suspect, with Dr. Benson, to make sure the calendar development process is put into policy. And it's a policy that can be followed, that develops good calendars for future years. And I do suspect, you know, 2019-2020 calendar will have a much different look in what is presented to us. And I don't want to wait until this time next year to be talking about that. We need to be talking about that, you know, here this summer about the process, whether or not we're doing another retreat this summer or sometime towards the end of summer, which I think would probably behoove us to do. It needs to be an agenda item in that retreat so we can really take some time and whiteboard out the process. And we can make sure we, as a school board, have a full understanding of the process, a full understanding, expectation of the calendar committee, a full expectation of the output of the calendar committee, and staff, Dr. Benson and his staff have had that full understanding. And then they can transfer that full understanding to members of the calendar committee, whether it becomes a staff committee, or, my opinion, a much more community-centric committee. So, I'll support the calendar or the motion as it's going forward now. But I do expect us to work on that process.
All right. Any other comments? All right, then I will, I will give mine. As I stated at the last meeting, I think that the board needs to do some more work on this particular calendar. I do have questions. I don't see the back of this calendar. I don't see how the 11-month employees fall on this or the 12-month. I had several people, had one employee reach out to me today that they thought that the Veterans Day holiday did not apply to 11-month employees, and I said, "I have no idea. I can't tell." I believe that the professional day after spring break for our teachers to have to come back and have the professional day, perhaps that was your request, but I do not know that, and I have not delved into that. This board asks that this motion come tonight to approve Only B. It was not part of the motion that we did a work session, although I did write as a, as something for what I thought as well for our summer retreat. For those reasons, I think that even if we're handed something that we, as the board, are the final ones who have to vote on it, and that I felt like we needed to do more work on it, so I will not be supporting it this evening because I do have some questions about this, and I don't think that we've had the in-depth. But that is, that's how I'll be voting this evening. But that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Madam Clerk, do you want to poll the board?
Mr. Connolly?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hiron?
Aye.
Ms. McCosker?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes five to two.
Thank you very much. Although I know the board did not support that, I do have some concerns about the back of the calendar not being part of this. We've had that issue in the past. Moving on to our information items. To re-adopt regulation, I'll just say the Code of Conduct, I know that became at the end of the meeting last time, and people were done and frustrated. This is a very important thing that we do handle. So, I wanted to make sure that there were no additional comments because we still could print this, should it be printed in July, was what I was told. Is that correct, Dr. Benson, that it wasn't, we were able to keep it till?
If you printed in July, which you have an additional group of forms which go out, there's two groups. There's the Code of Conduct, and there's all the forms that students and parents receive.
Right, right.
That actually has an earlier date for printing, and two of the forms are included in that group.
Okay. I still wanted to allow that for board members if there were additional questions. If there were not, we can certainly move it to action. But I felt at the end of the meeting, this is something that's an important area that I wanted to make sure there were adequate time.
Madam Chair, and please, you don't have to address, I've read the item. It doesn't seem like there's going to be any changes. So, you're okay with that, of course, because you wrote the item. But, so you don't see any changes that are needed?
The committee studied this. Committee feels it's working well. They did spend a lot of time talking about different aspects of the Code of Conduct, but not any changes were necessary.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, I do want to dive into it a little bit, although I'm not going to ask for any changes. I just want to, want my thoughts to be made here. And it goes back to what we've discussed within the Code of Conduct construct over the last two or three years, and this is the cellphone policy. I do think, you know, I have had fewer constituent contacts and teacher contacts this year about cellphone use, but I still have received a couple. Last year, when we passed the Code of Conduct and the electronic device acceptable policy or electronic device usage policy, I think there was a spirit and intent of the motion that was made, and it was definitely my intent, that use of cellphones in high school hallways was going to be limited. And we gave flexibility to building administrators at high schools to identify where students could use cellphones. As I understand it, almost all the high schools, if not all the high schools, have made all the hallways acceptable use areas. Now, I give credit to the building administrators, and I'm okay with that being the case and situation because, as I understand it, almost every building administrator polled their staff in some form or fashion. And the staff at the high schools overwhelmingly, from I've heard, supported going ahead and letting cellphone use go on in the hallways. If the staff at those schools that are with those students and see the activity from day in, day out are okay with it, then, you know, I'm not going to stand too far in their way. Although, they should still be aware, and building administrators should still be aware, that parents do still have concerns about that, that, you know, I've certainly heard from. I suspect some of my fellow members have heard from as well. One thing that we did ask for last year as well is that the cellphone or mobile device, electronic device usage policy be posted throughout high schools in conspicuous manners and in places that people are going to see it. My expectation was, it was going to be in multiple hallways, if not posting in every classroom. In the schools that I've been in, I haven't noticed it. Now, I've gone looking for in a particular high school, and I haven't seen it at all. But obviously, you know, in the other high schools I've been in, maybe it was, but it wasn't very, it didn't stand out to me. I would like to see that occur in which the building administrators at high schools are encouraged or required to post the electronic device use, usage policy, you know what I'm talking about, in hallways, you know, so that students cannot deny in any way, shape, or form, not only that they signed, you know, that they know about this policy, they're signing a piece of paper at the beginning of the year that they probably aren't reading, but it's in their face every single day that they're in our buildings. I want to make sure that they cannot deny that they don't know the policy. So, when they are, they are given a referral, and they're in front of a building administrator for discipline that they can't deny, "I didn't know." The, the other thing that I still see quite a bit of on social media is our kids taking pictures of themselves within bathrooms. Typically, you know, it's very, it's very innocent. It's, it's, it's taking, it's taking a selfie in a mirror. I get it, you know, especially, you know, I think young ladies like to do that, you know, showing off their hair or whatever. But...
He has boys, remember?
Yeah, I do. And, and, and hopefully, yeah, anyway.
His opinion.
Okay. I would like to make sure that the discipline action is being taken, and a real crackdown on use of cellphones, taking pictures in bathrooms and locker rooms is really being scrutinized. Because if we allow it, and if we just turn the other way on these, on that, that just is going to put us on a slippery slope, and all kinds of issues can come of it. So, I would hope that building administrators are being encouraged to really crack down on it. You know, I know a lot of building administrators know where, know how to track things that are going on in their schools within social media. So, you know, I really hope that they are taking action when they see these things occur. So, that's all I really have. Like I said, I'm not going to ask for any change tonight because I don't think it's going to be supported. I don't think there's going to be a level of interest in diving in and dissecting the Code of Conduct yet again. But I did want to make sure my points were clear.
I think that Mr. Hiron's made some points that may be good for discussion by this board, and perhaps if we have a work session or something over the summer, it'd be good to talk about it. But I would not want to see any directives given to the administrators to start posting policies because, you know, we have got a lot of policies and a lot of rules.
But our motion said that last year.
Well, but, well, maybe you can ask where they are posted. Maybe somebody ought to take a picture of them, unless they're in the bathroom or locker room, and they'll take the picture. But, but I, no, I agree. I mean, we specifically said, "No phones in, no pictures in the bathrooms or locker rooms." So, if people are violating that, you know, shame on them, and, you know, there needs to be discipline. But I just, I think you raised some good points. But I just, I, I think you raised some good points, but I, I think that we need as a board to discuss that in the context of the Code and Conduct in general and enforcement and, you know, how we're going about it, about making sure that the students understand, you know, what the rules are and they can't complain. But I would like to make a note for, as Ms. Decatur said, we weren't not accepting a recommendation because there wasn't one in the last case. Well, in this case, there is a recommendation, so hopefully we'll be accepting that recommendation at some point. We'll get credit for that when we do.
Is, is there an appetite to go ahead and, and move that based on the comments of Mr. Nelson and certainly Mr. Hyerins? I'm not trying to belittle your, your comments. I think they are very valid, but I just wanted to ask from the printing if we did not think there was going to be any changes, should we go ahead and allow the staff to start that process before our meeting in July?
Is this going to help make it more available to our, our students and their families? And Dr. Benson's shaking his head? If, if it were moved to action and acted on tonight?
Moving it to action.
Okay.
That's what I asked.
Well, in, in the interest of the community, then, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that would this be moved to action, particularly because it has been on for information already and since no changes are being recommended. If there were some changes being recommended, I would want to give more of an opportunity for comment, but since nothing is being recommended, I, I don't have any problem with moving it to action this evening. I make that motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to move this agenda item to action, so just on that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Is there a follow-on motion? Motion passes. Is there a follow-on motion?
Ms. Decatur, she wants to make a motion since we're accepting a recommendation.
To approve, uh...
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
Good job.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and you may go ahead and print, and I have put that on our list.
Make sure the committee knows.
I would like to, just, Madam Chair, as a point, I would like to second, second, thank you very little. I would like to help move Mr. Hyerins' issue along about the cell phone, so if we could bring that up at a summer session, if it's the will of the board, just to discuss, okay?
I was going to say at the end, I was going to say at the end of our meeting that you will be getting something from our clerk to schedule, because last year...
Right.
We did something in the summer where we set sort of the agenda, superintendent's goals and lots of things, so please look out for Missy, but please respond to her so we can pick that, like, Saturday or half a day.
Maybe the hospital will let us come back.
Yeah.
I can talk to Kathy. So, anyway, but, so everybody get out your summer calendars when Missy sends you something so we can figure out when to have it. All right. Moving on to 13.02, approving the application for Title I, Title II, and Title III. Are there any questions regarding this item? I have no questions.
I thought it was a pretty, pretty well-written board document.
Yeah, I did too.
It also looks like this one is due pretty soon.
Yes.
Yes.
So I would like to entertain a motion.
Move 1302 to action. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is now on for action. Is there another follow-on motion?
Move to approve 1302.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, oh, I see Mrs. Massey hiding back there. Thanks for staying.
Oh, I love when Ms. Massey briefs.
I know. Hopefully you all have certainly read this. There is, I can always let Ms. Massey, she's always much better at briefing it than I am, but I have the honor to serve with her on the Head Start Policy Council.
This, this is just the COLA application where the federal government gave us 1%, increase, which normally would be under the $75,000 grant limit, but we do need the chair's signature on the grant, so we were asked to bring it before you all. The due date is the 30th, so even though it's a small amount of money, we still have to get it in on time, so I do ask that...
Move to move 1303 to action.
Second. Sorry, Ms. Massey.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move 1303 for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Massey, for staying. All right.
Move to approve 1304 to action and approval?
Thank you.
Oh, come on, give me a second, somebody. Work, work.
Okay, 13.04. Ooh, proffer funds. We love these. Moving on, this is regarding a use of available proffer funds. Does anybody need a briefing by Mr. Hyerins, or have you all read it? We're good.
No, but this, I did, I'm trying to be brief, I'm sorry. I do want to point out, because, you know, this could, this could end up saying, well, someone could say, "Well, your comments earlier is completely different from what this is. This is bathrooms at a tennis court at a school." Well, what this is, is trying to complete the Stafford High School project. This was an item that was on the original, I guess, bid or proposal ask, so it was an additive item that was not funded within the original project, so we are trying to, to complete that project down there on as many of those items on the additive list as we can, and, you know, we had to move the tennis courts from where they were. They were where the school now exists, and the tennis courts are a short distance away from the school. They're not a long distance, but they're far enough away that it would all be awful helpful to have bathrooms near the courts for the students that are participating in tennis, for the events that go on there, and for the community that uses those. So I do see this as an appropriate use of proffer funds, and these funds, I believe the South Gate were actually within the proffer language directed towards Stafford High School, but regardless, they are within the area and they certainly meet the county's current guidelines, so this is a good project that I hope everyone will support.
I second Mr. Hyerins' comments, and it's also not just the, I think it's six, five or six tennis courts. I spent a lot of time on the tennis courts there this past couple of months, but it's also the field that is getting ready to be used extensively according to Ms. Mallory coming up here in the next school year, so these are, I echo his comments. This, we would appreciate your support with this.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to support moving this to action because we were told last night the supervisors don't have a July meeting. They're going to have one meeting in August, and I think the sooner this goes over, the more possibility it'll be there to be on their August agenda.
Second.
I would just, I would just like to, okay, okay, let's see, where are we? Have we moved it to action?
No.
Just make sure. I just want to make one comment.
That was my comment.
Comment.
I'll let you with it.
I just wanted to have one comment. This is more of a broad comment, and so this is more directed to the superintendent. Sorry, Mr. Fulmer, it's yours, too. Because of how proffers are collected, I know we're doing like proffer 101, when we get school proffers and it is delegated as school proffers, they are still carried on the county side. We don't know how many building permits, or I certainly don't, how many residential permits, so to be honest, it's not a quick idea to, to the school board members of how quickly that money comes in. We do know that we get some kind of, I guess, report, and I would just like to make sure that we, as a division, and Mr. Fulmer, I know you have quarterly reports that come to the board, I would really like to add, or would request, and I will ask the board whether their indulgence, to add the proffer accounting as of the date that we can get it. I don't know what day their report issues, but it also helps us know when these funds become available, because I drive my neighborhoods, I'll know when those occupancy permits are going up, but, you know, I just, I just would like to add that as a part of our quarterly appointment. I don't know if the board is, is interested in that, but I think based on our discussion tonight about proffer funds, it would be a great thing for us to, at least on a quarterly basis, be aware of those funds. Is there, is everybody okay with that, or? I can bring it to Fab, but this was just easier.
Madam Chairman, let...
Don't the finance people share that routinely with our finance people? So it's just a matter of passing it along to us, because I, I think the county is really good about keeping us informed, and our finance people have a great relationship, so isn't, is that not the case?
Mr. Fulmer's nodding his head. So we can get...
We have it.
Yeah.
It just needs to come to us more formally, so, so we just need to let Dr. Benson know that we need it, and he, he'll get it from staff to get to us.
I'd move 1304 to, to action. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moving this to, to action. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Follow-on motion?
Move 1304 for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Healy.
Yep. All right. Moving on, so, Mr. Fulmer, we just got you prepped for this. If you want to come forward to talk about year-end funding and possible additional items on the FY infrastructure project list. I only had one correction before you get started, Mr. Fulmer, is I believe at the last meeting, we did modify project number 20 to say tennis courts, North Stafford High School and/or Mountain View High School. Is that the correct reading? Thank you. Mr. Fulmer?
This is a, obviously, joint effort with Mr. Hyerins, but wanting to, you know, we've routinely brought this back to you guys over the past month, five or six weeks probably, and started, little recap, approved items one through 14. Last week, approved up to number 20. We have, through today, executed process, one through 14. Scott's folks are amping those up, so now, although you guys approved 15 through 20, we were holding off, and as funds became available, we have processed another payroll, and then tomorrow, we'll be able to process our last two accruals that I've given you guys details about how that process works a couple of times, so I don't want to go into much detail, but until we process those finals approvals, we won't know exactly how many, the funds that we have left, but we do, obviously, don't want to cut it too close. I do feel comfortable that if the board wants to go farther down the list and approve that and give the ability that the funds, if they are available, after we run the payrolls and all the compensation and benefits have been analyzed and recorded, that with Mr. Hyer, Mr. Hyerins' help, we can get a few of these projects committed.
I'm actually going to look to the superintendent. I don't want to run it too close. I don't know what that number is, of how far we should go, and, or, Chris, I, I don't have a good sense.
So, and I just want to clarify, if you, as far as you guys are comfortable going down the list, doesn't mean that we have to execute every one of them. More or less, I would appreciate the ability that, you know, if we can get to 22, 23, you know, I'm throwing, hypothetically, throwing it out there, we would not commit to that until we were comfortable that the funds are available.
Ms. Healy, do you have a question about the...
Well, I just want to make sure that, that, that number 20 says repair tennis court, North Dever High School and/or...
Did we have...
Mountain View. I mean, we, we specifically wanted to add Mountain View because we got some information, which has not been verified at this point, or at least I haven't seen anything, that the Mountain View courts were actually in much worse condition than the, the courts at North Stafford, and that the Mountain View courts can't even be played on competitively right now, so that's something that we want to, you know, we need to confirm that information and then see, I don't know if it'll have to come back to the board. I mean, I understood from Mr. Hyerins that we could award a contract for the work and just not specifically identify where it's going to be done. Is that correct?
Well, since we spoke to you during the work session, we were able to gather more information on, on that. The Mountain View tennis courts are larger. They have two additional courts more than North Stafford, so there's eight, so it's a larger area, and they're in much worse condition. So we had a cost proposal provided to us by our job order contractor for approximately $790,000, so that's the scope compared to North Stafford, so that gives you an idea of the difference. There's significant issues with the, the foundation underneath the tennis courts, which is causing the cracking, and that's the root cause of the cracking, and it's just being, it's just getting larger as, as water gets in there. We have the freeze cycle, plus there's clay, expansive soils under there, that are just creating havoc underneath our tennis court there, and that's, that's the, the crux of the issue, and so we're going to have to remove that entire tennis court surface, treat it with what we call a cementatious mix to provide, to provide the, the proper base for that, and then we come back with a, with the, the proper surface on top of that, so it's a very expensive process.
And is it true that they can't compete at Mountain View on those courts?
I, I certainly don't want to speak for Jim Stimple and Greg Markine, but they are currently operating where I believe six out of the eight courts, they cannot have competition matches on, so they can practice, but not competition matches.
Okay, and is there a possibility of repairing a portion of the courts?
That always is a possibility. It's certainly not nearly as efficient.
But, of course, it's not ideal, but it's not ideal. We don't have $790,000. The most we're going to have, it looks like, is 310. That's what we had identified for, for North.
I think if the board chooses...
And let me, let me make clear, are we competing on the North courts? I mean, are there any...
Yes.
Okay, so that's not...
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
There's two different...
Yes.
Situations. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I think the board certainly has the, the wherewithal to say, if you wanted us to try to fund that particular project, to do that, as long as funds are available with the year end, as, as Mr. Fulmer goes through his payrolls. That's certainly something the board can do. I don't know, I, I don't want to steer you wrong, you know, that's a, that's almost a cohesive court system, so trying to do part of it and not the other, it certainly can be done, but I wouldn't recommend it. I would recommend we go and do the, the entire effort at one time, if that means, you know, I, I just don't think, it certainly can be done. I don't want to tell you that it can't, but I don't think it's in the best interest of it.
Well, the only reason I ask that is you said there's more courts at Mountain View than are at North, so I, you know...
It just happened to be there.
Funds are limited.
Right. Yes, ma'am. It just happens to be a court...
So if there was a way to, to repair enough so that they could compete at a minimum, that, you know, would meet the immediate needs.
I think there is, but it's problematic. It's just not real clean, and is there value in going that route versus trying to, trying to get it holistically and do it holistically? I think it's much more efficient if we, if we do it holistically and we are able to, to acquire the, the funding needed.
Ms. Healy, I think what I'm hearing, too, is Mr. Fulmer says that there may, after they run these reports, or final reports, be additional funds available, that if we went to, say, I'd be willing to include the furniture to renovate the library at North Stafford High School, which is the next item, number 21, for $30,000, we are looking for $510,000 essentially, to be able to fund all the way through 21. I know I've added one, but for, for this great North Stafford Library, I'm willing to say, let's go that far, and then I would say, Mr. Hyerins, if, and this is just me speaking, and we will see where the board goes, to fund the $30,000, and then let's see if we can find that 480, if Mr. Fulmer finds about a half a million in savings as, as we run the final payrolls, that we could get those courts, and Ms. Healy, maybe we could have them for spring, because spring is when we would need those courts for competition.
Well, Madam Chairman, I certainly would, would move forward with the furniture for renovate the North Stafford Library at $30,000 in any event. I mean, we're going to have $30,000. Let's just go ahead and approve that one.
Yeah, I wanted to get to 21.
But, but with respect to the, the tennis courts, I, I agree. I mean, I'd love to see the courts fixed, all of them, at Mountain View, but, you know, North Stafford was also identified, you know, as a need here, and there's a reason that that was number 20, so I do not want to just say, "We'll do Mountain View" and forget North Stafford, so we're really not talking about a half million dollars, we're talking about $790,000 more dollars. So I, I mean, I want to do it, but if there's, if there's a way to, to, to try to do something for North as well, that's what I want to do, because I'm not going to just let North fall off the chart here. I mean, I, granted, you know, Mountain View needs to be done, whoever's not competing, but, but I don't want to just lose, lose that in the, in the, in the list here.
My hope would be is that the list would be repopulated as we got to the spring with a whole new set of projects as we go forward, correct?
It would, but I think, would, I don't want to speak for Chris, but I think if, if you could, the board could choose to, to identify both projects and say, Mountain View would be first, and if you had the funds to get Mountain View, then get it, and then if you could continue, and if North Stafford, if there were enough funds to do... to do North, do that, and that way, that way you give staff the most flexibility as we reach into the last few days of the month and the fiscal year, so that could be a possibility.
I, I would certainly, um, support that.
Ms. Decatur had a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I've just got an off-the-wall question, I apologize, because I know it's late, but... Humor me for just a second, and I would certainly be in support of that, because I think we've already, we know that North Stafford can play on their tennis courts, I don't feel that we're outing North Stafford, and I'm fine with that. This tennis thing at Colonial Forge, I'm sorry, it's a little off-topic, but when were they built? Are there like, who built them? Are there foundation issues? What's happening there?
At Colonial Forge?
Are there any issues?
Of Mountain View, Mountain View, I think she meant.
The courts that we can't play on right now?
Yeah.
Mountain View, okay.
Sorry.
Not a problem.
Who built them? When were they built? Are there issues with the soil? Is this going to happen again? What's going on? Seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money.
I agree, absolutely. They were built in two thousand and four, the school was open two thousand and five.
Which is not that long ago, because that's when I graduated.
So, no, absolutely, it's twelve years. We've got twelve years of, uh, use out of that court before the cracking has, has caused us to have issues. Is that expected life for a court? No, that's certainly premature. It was built under the PPEA, it was designed, uh, by Patton Harris Russ, the civil engineers, and, uh, built by Hess Construction.
Do they have any kind of, like, warranty on this court?
Not, not at this point, no, ma'am, no, 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 ma'am, it's, it's certainly long gone, that warranty on that particular, uh, type of construction.
But are we sure that the soil and all of that is going to sustain a, a court in that location?
Well, I think, I think the particular fix that we have designed, we, what we did last year when the cracking started becoming an issue, we, we hired one of our geotech, uh, professional consultants to come out, look at it, they provided us a thorough report, a study on the, uh, what they felt are the conditions and what's causing it, so we've taken that and we've used that as the basis for our design and our fix, and so we feel confident, this is essentially what we did at Brook Point four or five years ago, when we repaired the courts at Brook Point, um, we had some similar issues, but, uh, we got a lot longer life out of that particular court the first time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, just as a, a point of the, the blast from the past, I'm sure you remember, Mr. Hiran, we couldn't play on that baseball field at Mountain View, that was a nightmare. The year it was opened, the baseball field was not usable.
Yes, ma'am.
We had to go back to the contractor, it was horrible. We couldn't, we lost a whole season.
Why do we keep, keep getting all of this terrible land?
Well, that was a construction issue, it wasn't the, the land.
Well, actually, actually, the school board bought that.
That land for a million dollars. I wasn't on the board then, but the, one of, you know, in, back in the past, they paid a million dollars for that whole site, which ended up to be a pretty good investment, given the, the price of land nowadays.
All right, is there, um, an appetite for a motion along the lines that we just spoke about, including, um, going though to number twenty-one, which would also include that furniture for the, for the, um, library, including, um, Mountain View first and North Stafford second regarding tennis courts, as if funds became available? Is that the kind of motion you're...
Madam Chairman, I'd make that motion, and it looks like we're going to have to put one point one million, um, as funds become available for North Stafford and Mountain View, and that would be the seven, no, seven ninety, and that would be one million, wouldn't it?
I got it.
Uh, one, yeah, one point one million, okay.
Yep.
It's getting so late. Who's got a calculator?
Is that what you need, Mr. Fulmer, or is that not what you need?
Go up, up through number twenty-one with the change in twenty, but twenty would be as funds become available, so twenty-one would automatically go before twenty, if the funds aren't available for twenty. And the first priority in twenty would be Mountain View.
Yep.
Second?
Is that clear? Okay, was there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
We just need to move this to action first.
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Really getting one.
Look at you, being all fourteen.
Change my person. Move it to action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this item to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Healy?
Do I have to repeat my motion from earlier? Oh, oh, thank you very much.
Does it repeat this motion? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?